Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of Tuesday, October 11th, 2022, to order all members of this board are present. We did have an executive session for the purposes of discussing strategy with respect to litigation revolving or involving several matters. And at this time, I would kindly ask that we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I do want to apologize to everyone for running a little bit late. We had a number of cases, probably in excess of 10 to 15 cases to review, so we are running a little bit behind. Before I go into the remainder of the agenda, I just want to comment that members of this board, Bev, the town manager, are wearing an article of clothing that is pink in support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month for the month of October. So thank you to everyone for doing that. I do see some people out in the audience with pink on as well, so thank you. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the Treasury warrants 202313, 202313 W.I.R.E.S., 13A, 202314, 202314 W.I.R.E.S., and 14A. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to the approval of the minutes for September 26th, 2022 is the year. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve these minutes as presented?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our first appointment. As I mentioned, we are running slightly behind. It's with Noah Carreri. Did I state that last name correctly? Carreri, thank you. Who is an Eagle Scout candidate, who is here with Louis Semaglia, our Director of Veteran Services regarding your Eagle Scout project. Welcome this evening. Please have a seat at the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening, Louis.
Thank you again for having us. It's becoming a regular event here, coming to your Board of Selectmen meetings. I'd like to introduce Noah Carreri, another fine gentleman, young man from Wilmington that's taken upon himself to honor Wilmington's fallen warfighters and with his other unbelievable Eagle Scout project. And I'd like to, oh, go ahead. I'd like to introduce Noah Carreri.
Hi, everyone. I'm Noah Carreri. I'm a senior at Wilmington High School. I'm currently a Eagle Scout in Troop 56, also currently an Eagle Scout candidate. So my project is going to be a battlefield cross inside of the Wildwood Cemetery Veterans Lot. So a battlefield cross is, it's essentially memorial to a fallen soldier on the battlefield. It's a pair of combat boots with a rifle, M16, M4 planted in the ground by the barrel in between the boots, and then on top of that is a helmet. And then hanging from the rifle is the soldier's dog tags, and you can see that in the picture on the second page. And that tradition also dates back as far as the Civil War, where soldiers would be buried on the battlefield in designated areas. My project is going to greatly benefit the Wilmington community, and it's going to benefit the community by bringing an impressive sculpture into the Veterans Lot of the Wildwood Cemetery. And it's going to be a designated and special place where family members and citizens can pay respects to all of Wilmington's fallen warfighters. The monument is going to be a lasting tribute to fallen service members and a reminder to all that the citizens of Wilmington will never forget their ultimate sacrifice. I also am hoping that it's going to attract more people to visit the Veterans Lot to pay their respects to our fallen heroes. So the location of this is, I'm planning on it being right in front of the already existing flagpole. It's going to be right at the base of that. The whole statue, including the base, is going to be made out of bronze, and there's going to be a plaque on the front commemorating all of Wilmington's fallen soldiers. The actual statue, it's going to be about 38 inches tall, and the base is going to add another 6 to 10 inches to that. And the base is also going to be 18 by 22 inches wide. Myself, along with volunteers, will be digging a 24 by 28 inch hole, and we'll be pouring a cement foundation into that hole. The depth of that foundation will be determined after discussion with the sculptor, who we're going to be getting the whole statue from, a cement contractor, and also, most importantly, input from the DPW. And to prevent any thievery or other things like that, we're going to be securing the whole sculpture to the cement with bolts. So from the time that we order the sculpture to the installation of it, I'm estimating that it's going to be about six weeks to complete everything, and I want to start my project as soon as possible due to the fact that it is getting colder out, and I don't want to have to deal with frozen ground. I've had to deal with that before, and it's not the most fun thing ever. So, yeah. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you very much for this excellent presentation. When I received word from Lou directly for you to come in, I was thrilled. Tonight is your night, and I don't want to take away from that, but I just came from an Eagle Scout ceremony just about a week or two weeks ago for another gentleman, and I'm so impressed with the whole process of becoming an Eagle Scout and just the commitment that you and all of your fellow friends and colleagues that are in these troops, what you do, and just your level of service and commitment. So it's a credit to you, to your family, to your tenacity and commitment to doing this. This is a labor of love for all of you, and you can see the pride of all the work that you've done. So obviously, partnering with Lou and doing something from a veteran's perspective is near and dear to everyone's heart. This is just a further extension of some of the good work that's been done that you've seen displayed. I can speak personally from attending veterans' events with Lou that this is actually set up. Lou has the boots and has the setup that he has to put together and assemble there, and this way, you're forever going to be memorializing that, which is going to be a visual symbol of all that you articulated to us this evening. So I think it's an excellent project. The location is great. When I had a one-on-one meeting with the town manager, and I talked about, you know, making sure that DPW was involved, you've clearly indicated that here. I think the biggest thing would be, one, I believe all of us are going to be very supportive of this and approve it. The one thing that isn't here, and this is not a negative, this is more our wish to help you, is that this is going to cost money to do. And so I would be interested in hearing from you, to the extent that you know and I understand that you may not have the exact numbers, but what this is going to cost for you to do this, and how we can send the message out to the community that if anybody would want to make a philanthropic donation of any kind, whether it's a dollar, every bit counts, to help you achieve your project. Do you have any comments on that at this time?
I do. So right now, my estimated cost for the whole project is going to run around $5,000.
Okay.
And I currently am working on a few fundraisers to help me get that goal. I have a t-shirt fundraiser that I'm setting up with my mom, and that should help a lot. And I also have a GoFundMe I'm going to set up, and we're also thinking of planning a few other things.
Okay. And so what do you think in terms of the timeline to get in? Because right now, obviously, today's date, and I'm not pressuring you with these questions, just thinking out loud that today is, you know, obviously, October 11th. What is your goal in terms of reaching that number so that you could get it in before the cold weather?
I do want to have it all the way, the whole dug, everything, at least the whole dug, by end of November at the very latest. And obviously, the fundraising, it's going to take a little bit, but by that point, I think that we should be fine in terms of the money and that we can, or the statue. It doesn't need to be, obviously, warm weather when we put the statue in, but preferably.
Sure. So you'll be able to probably get the footing in now to get it set?
Yeah, definitely.
And then if you have to back end it with the actual installation?
Yeah.
So let me just say this to you. I don't want to get ahead of the rest of the board members, but if I could just leave this message with both of you is that if you can get that information to us so that we can help get that word out for you, and, you know, whatever I can do to help you spread the word as well. So I'm going to turn it over to anyone else that might have any questions. I'll start to my left.
Noah, great job, and, you know, congratulations. I'm proud that you're at this point in your scouting career as an Eagle Scout mom from Troop 56. You guys just keep cranking them out over there. I love it. But, you know, it's great. I do know the dedication it takes, you know, to get to this point, and, you know, your parents, I know, are a big part of it. But I echo Judy's sentiments. That's what I was going to ask, you know, what can we do to help out with fundraising? So when you know, please, you know, reach out to the chairwoman, and she will pass that along, and I'm sure we can communicate it. But this is, it's beautiful. Just looking at it gives me chills, and I think it's in the perfect place, and I can't wait to see it. I look forward to that ceremony, so, great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for thinking of the vets. Military is very strong in this country. We're proud of our military. At no time in the recent years have I seen any negative towards our men and women that protect us all the time, and I thank you for thinking of them. And I know, I have no concerns when I hear things like this, knowing that Lou is there backing the project. Let, again, as my colleague said, let us know when your fundraisers are scheduled, and we'll make sure that everyone gets the word out. Let's be proud of our military, and I just ask everyone out there that's watching, donate to it. It's another way that we say thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys so much for all your eagerness to fundraise. It means a lot to me.
I'm going to turn it over to my right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gentlemen, thank you both for being here with your presentation. Noah, thank you. We're really excited about this, and obviously, we're really proud of you. I know your family's here with you, and I'm sure they're very proud as well.
They should be. But we're just so grateful that we have young men like you and young women in our community that are willing to step up. You mentioned it's your senior in high school, there's probably one of the greatest times in your life, and you could be doing a million other things, but for you to step up and take this on speaks volumes of you and your family. So we're super grateful, and as was mentioned by my colleague to my left, Lou doesn't draft just anybody to take on these projects. So obviously, you've impressed him, which is enough for me. So I look forward to supporting this tonight and whatever we can do to support you moving forward. Thank you so much, Noah.
Thank you.
And Lou.
Thank you, Noah. Great presentation. It's really all been said by my colleagues. When you go, when you go in this order, you end up listening to all the good thoughts and words from my colleagues, and I echo all that. And I thank you and your family, and I thank Lou all the time I see him. He's just a great guy. I'm glad you are working together on this project. But I know it's all you, and it's the Troop 56, and they'll all be behind you, I'm sure, digging the hole and filling in the cement and getting it all prepared and ready. But just great. It's just a wonderful presentation. It's a nice tribute to the men and women who served this country honorably, and I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
So before I call for the vote, just to cover this, is that if I can just kindly ask, when we finish, is that you can speak with Lou as to how to get in touch with me to get the fundraising information out? And then I would just kindly ask that you both remain seated once the vote's taken so we can take another agenda item out of order.
Okay. If I may, I appreciate the kind words towards me, but these young men that have come into my office to come up with Eagle Scout projects, getting a little older now, I just had a birthday this last week, it amazes me that these young men come in the office and they have these ideas of things they want to do to honor our fallen, our fallen. A lot of, a lot of the guys that I deal with, and women that I deal with, have this tattooed on their body. It means a lot to fallen warfighters that have buried the ones that they've loved and they've served with. So for this young man to think of this, to have this in our Veterans Lot where our KIA's are buried, it means a lot, and I just want to publicly thank this young man for doing that. It means a lot.
Thank you. So at this time, I entertain a motion to grant the request as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, second, and all those in favor, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
So at this time, I just kindly ask you to be, remain seated, please, as I take an agenda item out of order. Typically, what's usual and customary is that at the end of our meeting, we will do a salute to service, and our selectman Greg Bendel handles this part of our agenda, so I'd like to turn it over to Greg at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone, once again, and thank you, Madam Chair, for taking this out of order. We're very lucky tonight that we have this gentleman with us. Very rarely do we get to honor somebody who's in front of us, and tonight, we have that distinction. So it's my honor on behalf of our board and our entire community to honor Mr. Stanley R. Souza, and I know he's in the room, so I certainly want to recognize him as we have a few words.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And Madam Chair, if I may, just so everybody is aware, so that we can honor Mr. Souza properly, and as we pass this down the line here, Mr. Souza was a U.S. Navy veteran, a sonarman, seaman in the Korean conflict. He earned the following awards: National Defense Service Medal, the United Nations Service Medal, Korean Service Ribbon with one star. He entered the service in July of 1951 and finished his service in December of 1953. He served aboard the USS McGowan, which he proudly displays on his cap, I see. And it was, and I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, sir, but it was almost 70 years to this week that you deployed to Japan with your mates, and thank goodness you came back. But we are so grateful for your service to our community and to our country, so tonight, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, we salute you, sir. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Twenty twenty-one, so like a year and a half. I was just thinking about that the other day. Uh, I've been, I personally have been in recovery for over nine years. I've been working with people in various, uh, you know, settings of recovery for about six, uh, in sober living, uh, outpatient clinical, um, just working with people off the street. Uh, it's something that's kind of near and dear to my heart, um, you know, so to be able to support, uh, or to be of any support of any use to Samantha and the police department. And the, the chief just said this the other night at our vigil, that it's not a problem you're gonna arrest away, uh, and that kind of idea that it takes a village, right? Everybody kind of working together to provide whatever support you, you can, and everybody's got different skills and different assets and, uh, you know, when people need help, they need help. So, uh, if there's anything that I can do to be supportive to the community or be, or Samantha or the police station, uh, it's something that I genuinely enjoy doing. Sure.
Um, so he's been an awesome as addition to our team. And then Xena joined us in January, I think as most of you are aware. Um, and she is now eleven months old and she's going through training to become a, a therapy dog to be another asset for the, for the unit. So there's a lot of research to suggest that sometimes people in crisis respond differently to animals than to humans. Um, so that's one approach that we're, we're trying to give. Um, and so she is, um, she's on it. And then we also have a, a graduate level intern who joins us for about sixteen hours a week, um, for a full calendar year. So that's been, um, a wonderful addition also that this is now our second year having that, um, partnership with Boston College. Um, we did just have our vigil, as Daryl mentioned, in, um, about a month ago. We had probably like eighty to ninety people, um, attend that, which was a really wonderful turnout, considering it'd been about two years since we had our last one in person. Um, we had to scurry and change the location last minute because of rain, so it was at the fire department. Um, but we had a wonderful, wonderful, you know, showing for that. And then we had two local residents who, um, were our guest speakers, who have had, um, various amounts of recovery time, but that myself and, um, Lou have both personally worked with and have been able to watch them come through recovery. So that was really special for, for us, um, I know myself specifically too. Um, some updates. Um, unfortunately throughout COVID, we still had a lot of mental health and substance use concerns, right? So, um, originally there was kind of a downtick, but now we're really seeing kind of this curve up of a lot of individuals really struggling with, not only, uh, drug abuse, but also alcohol abuse is really on the uptick. Um, you know, it's, it's accessible all through COVID. You could get it delivered to your front doors. Um, it's more kind of like socially accepted if we want to kind of go that way. Um, so we are seeing a lot more people, um, come through our office who have had, um, some form of, of, um, unhealthy relationship with alcohol. Um, and then we've also seen an uptick in kind of just your generalized depression, anxiety. And a lot of people are just in crisis, whether it's throughout COVID, they didn't kind of follow through with their treatment providers. They maybe are now waiting till crisis mode to actually access treatment, um, various things for different people. But, um, we're kind of seeing more people in crisis rather than kind of like maybe people who are not quite to crisis mode and we can intervene. I think a lot of what we're seeing now is like people are in full-blown crisis and we're kind of trying to figure out, how do we kind of assess and, and help them in that moment? So that's kind of what we're seeing. Um, you know, continued partnerships with town, different town departments is wonderful. Um, we have a great relationship with Mayflower, the new detox in town. So we're very, Wilmington's very fortunate to have the resources we do. Um, and we just like kind of coming once a year or so to just kind of show you guys kind of what we're doing and answer any questions you might have. So.
Thank you very much for that. So in having a meeting with Jeff as the chair, um, we would talked about the vigil and thank you very much for inviting me to speak at that. I enjoyed being there. I had gone to them previously in the past. And then just the good work that you're doing and just the suicide awareness last month. And then obviously coming out of the pandemic and with us getting back together and all of the social emotional work that's happening at the schools and with Shelley Newhouse and with the, um, the outside groups that have been formed to talk about all of these topics. I felt that it was best to have you come in, obviously with Zena now being on board and now obviously having you as well. Thank you for the service that you provide to our community. I felt that it made sense to come in collectively and have some, um, time with the board to share what you're doing, um, but also have a public opportunity to convey to the public for people that may or may not know the breadth of services that you provide and help continue to facilitate these discussions. I have had, um, personally through my personal and professional endeavors in the past month, more than three people of different walks of life and different capacities mentioning conversation that they were in recovery. It's the first time, I'm gonna be fifty this year, that people were candid in professional settings to talk about business, but in some way, shape or form, mentioned they were in recovery. I was very pleased by that because that's speaking to the fact that people are becoming more comfortable unveiling that truth about them and it doesn't define who they are and what they're capable to do and that they can be contributing members to society and that that isn't a label that they have to walk around with or a stigma, that they've gone through that, they've walked through that and they're still walking through it and it's part of the fabric of who they are. I was very encouraged by that. They're very, and I would never have, would have known unless they had told me. Um, so to me, that's encouraging and I think the only way to really address this from a community perspective is our willingness to talk about it. Now granted, when I spoke, I spoke about my own personal experience, not with me specifically in recovery, but immediate family members. I had never done that before. That was very difficult for me to do, but I was glad that I had done it and that provided me an opportunity to do that. So thank you. Um, but I think it's important because I do see it on the rise. I, I talk to parents that don't, you know, know, um, what's available. I was driving the other day and I had someone who's in recovery that I met through my profession and said, we need, you know, a recovery coach, um, in Wilmington. And through this endeavor, I learned that we actually have one. I knew we had you. I knew we had Xena, but respectfully stated, I didn't know, um, your role and how you had been helping as well. And, you know, people wanting to have me put them in touch with you, which I'm going to do. Um, I also received a message from your grad student today, um, to have a sit-down conversation, which I was pleased with that as well. So the message that I'm getting across to you right now is that you're doing excellent work. Um, it's needed. It's appreciated. We appreciate you. Um, we appreciate everyone. We have our school superintendent here. Um, we have Paul Gergio here, who's with our school department. We have various town personnel that's in the audience. Um, and so we as a board, over the past several years, have had a unified effort, whoever's been sitting in these seats, along with the manager and Bev, that we're committed to helping our community with these topics and these programs and these endeavors. And it's beyond just our footprint within the community. We need the outside resources and the expertise of all of you to get this done. So I just wanted to, you know, kind of bring it full circle and say thank you. Um, I think we need to do more on our end to help you with the public outreach. Not everybody sees every individual meeting, whether it's a school committee or a vigil or a school event. Um, it's important that we continue to have these conversations. So I appreciate you being here. So I'm gonna turn it over to my fellow board members. I'm gonna start to my right if anyone would like to make a comment, uh, or ask a question on the right side of the table.
Samantha, thank you. Welcome. Thank you for the, for the fine work both of you do, uh, for the community. Um, my chair pretty much said it all. Um, but you, maybe you could tell the, the viewers how they can contact you.
Yeah.
What, what's the easiest way? Is it just, uh, calling the fire department, the police department or, or a direct line to you? How, how does that work?
Yeah, great question. So there's multiple avenues. So people can call, you know, the police department, the fire department, the central dispatch line. Um, if they forget a number, that's an easy, very direct way to get ahold of either one of us. Um, we also both have work cell phones. So my phone number is nine seven eight four four seven two two nine six and Daryl's is?
Nine seven eight four four seven four four oh four.
Um, and then I think both of our contact information is on the town website under, um, our page. So anyone can reach out at any time. Um, it doesn't have to be through a, an emergency service call. Um, people can stop into the lobby. People can call us that aren't in, in, um, you know, having to call for emergency services. So we try to be as accessible as possible.
Yeah, I, I remember when Mr. Bender was probably, you know, was better than I, I remember, what is it? About four or five years ago, I think, uh, this position was created in, maybe six years, so six years when we were first on the board, when we first started, created this position. I think it was one of the first i- in the Merrimack Valley and, uh, and we brought on the, the right person. And, uh, thank you for what you're doing here. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to both of you. I, uh, I concur with my colleagues with the comments that have already been made. But I too want to thank you both, uh, for what you do for this community. Obviously, we are well aware that, you know, no family is immune to this. Uh, and so that, uh, this could, this could happen to anyone at any time. And so we're so grateful that we have this resource. I'm so proud, along with my colleagues, to, uh, to support this year in and year out, along with our residents at town meeting. And I just think it's a wise investment that we have this resource available. I think it also speaks volumes to the police department that we have, led by, uh, Chief, who's in the back there and just shows how compassionate they are. Um, I, I love the comments that Daryl shared about Chief's words, and I've heard him say those words, uh, many times before, that, you know, you can't, we can't arrest our way out of this. I, I'm so glad that he mentioned that again. Uh, and I'm just so grateful that we have this and I hope people will take advantage. I too, uh, uh, know people who have reached out to you and they're very pleased. And, uh, you know, having grown up here, I wish we had it sooner, you know, and, but I'm just so grateful that we have this for residents now. And so I certainly wish you, uh, both, uh, Daryl, I wish you well, continued success and, uh, all three of you. Uh, I look forward to continuing to see you around town. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you've done and all you will be doing. Uh, having a few friends that are recovering. They said the hardest thing to do was to ask for help and to get someone that would help you. In my course of my career, I was a substance abuse officer for my union, and I know that was the hardest thing. But to have someone that puts a s- a smile on her face, in his face, and is willing to sit down and talk, you don't see that much. And I commend the town, number one, for creating the position and for hiring the people they've hired. But we gotta, we all have to understand that everyone needs help at times and there's nothing to be ashamed about. You need it, ask for it and you'll get it. And, uh, I just want to thank you very much and I hope to see the pop around town. Thank you.
Um, yeah, thank you both and Xena for being here. And, uh, Daryl, congratulations on your nine years and a lifetime more of, of recovery. Um, but thank you both, you know, for what you're doing for the town and, and for all the residents. And I think, you, it's been said and as you explained, you know, it, it goes beyond, you know, the alcohol and the substance abuse. It's mental health as well. Um, and I think that's a big thing to get across because I think when people think of recovery, it, it, it spans all of that, right? Um, and I just have a quick question and I know that's no one, no age, race is, is exempt from any of this. But you had mentioned you're seeing a rise. Are you seeing it in a specific age group?
We're seeing, I mean, the, the age group from like now, I guess it's like mid thirties to mid forties is, is a pretty, unfortunately, kind of common age that we're seeing. Um, but we're also seeing kids. We're seeing, um, you know, we're seeing people in their eighties that have really pretty acute concerns also. So it's, it's unfortunately acrossed it and, you know, depending on familial support and friend's support is gonna depend on their, you know, ability to engage, willingness to follow through. Um, but I think we try to be that support for some people that they might, you know, just checking in with someone, just following up, kind of being that accountability. Um, but I don't, I mean, I don't know if you're noticing a specific, I, I think that like thirty-five to forty-five. Um, and then for some reason, like a few ten-year-olds have popped up this week, like multiple, like really young kids that, um, like when I was ten, I didn't know about the things that these ten-year-olds are knowing about. So I think that's, you know, a whole separate.
Yeah.
Thing in and of itself.
And I do think COVID has a lot spanning all the age groups to do that because, you know, as you had mentioned, you know, people were home, were drinking. It was easy access, it was something to do and it became people having social hours on Zoom and all that stuff. And then the kids, you know, lacking the social interaction and, you know, putting a kindergartner in front of a, a TV screen for the, all that time. I mean, you know, Dr. Brand can attest to that. I mean, any age it was, and, and the parents, never mind, you know, so. But, um, thank you both so much. I mean, it's so, so important and the more we bring, um, light to all of these matters, um, the better. Because it is that there's, you know, that stigma that we're trying to, to stomp out and I, I do think we're making strides in it. Um, I, I've struggled with anxiety my entire life. I don't care who knows it. And, you know, I had a life event in my family, you know, some years ago, um, that I actually had to go on medication for it and I'm still on medication for it every day because it helps me. Um, you know, and, and I'm proud of that because I needed the help and it took me pretty much a breakdown to get there. But, um, you know, but I got it and it helped me. And, um, I will tell anybody that story if it'll encourage someone to reach out and get help. Because, you know, your family loves you and they want you to get help, but they're also afraid to, I think, sometimes like push you in that direction because of the, the reaction for it. So I, I just can't thank you guys enough because it, it's, it's great work and we are so really blessed to have you guys here. So thank you.
Well, thank you for sharing that too. I mean, I think a piece of this is like normalizing it, right? So like tons of people are on heart medication or blood pressure medication, you know, why can't we throw out anxiety medication or depression medication? So thank you for sharing.
I, I am able to, you know, do, you would never, that's what I mean. You don't know, like you could look at anybody. You would never know I had that because, you know, I just am able to thankfully function, just go through my day. Um, but I know for a fact that, you know, when I went through that thing, like, I don't need this anymore, you know? And my doctor was like, but is it giving you any side effects? And I'm like, no. Well, she's like, then why would you want to get off of it? You know, and I was like, okay, you know, why, you know, do that? So, um, but yeah, I think it's really important and it's nothing to be ashamed of. So I hope, um, we continue as a society to, um, you know, get rid of that stigma. And for sure, I have no doubt that what the two of you are doing and, and others like you are, are making strides with that. So really thank you.
Thank you. So I do see a number of people in the audience. Um, I do want to just ask if there's anyone here that is here to speak on this topic. Um, don't feel compelled to rise and speak, but I just want to be sure that if anyone is here to ask a question or wants to speak on this specific agenda item, that you have the ability to do so. Anything from you, Jeff, at all?
Uh, so much of it's been said. Um, it seems like as the years roll on, uh, we're just confronted with more and more challenges, whether it's the opioids or the fentanyl or you name the, uh, the drugs that are out there. The alcohol, it's been talked about, the stresses of having to deal with a pandemic that none of us have lived through. So, you know, the fact that, uh, specifically you Samantha have been here for the stretch that you've been here and have really integrated yourself into the community and certainly Daryl, um, being involved more recently. But, uh, has been a, just an incredible, uh, asset to us, um, being able to work with veteran services, elderly services, uh, the school department, uh, the health department, um, it really bringing all of those, um, separate agencies together, um, for this wellness piece is just so important.
Thank you. So just in closing, I want to thank you once again for being here. If there's anything that we can do for you as a board, um, anything that you need, feel free to, you know, reach out to us directly and through the manager. And then obviously thank you to police and fire and obviously to our school department and veterans and elderly, as has been mentioned. But, you know, every one of these departments is aware that this is a, a, a community initiative that we all support. So if anyone's listening at home and you have a firefighter that's a friend or a police officer that's a friend or someone in the school department that's a friend, it doesn't matter what avenue you make entry to make that introduction. We will get you over to your team and, and take it from there. And obviously, you know, all of the leadership team is asking for, you know, confidentiality and discretion and helping people in a non-judgmental way. So, uh, whatever we can do to continue to facilitate this process for you as ambassadors of the work that you do, don't hesitate to call upon us. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great night. Thank you. So once again, thank you to everyone for your patience in terms of us going over our agenda times. Um, all of these items on this agenda are very important, so we want to make sure that we're giving everybody, um, the correct amount of time and attention that they so, uh, deserve. So at this time, I'd like to move on to our next appointment, which is with Greg Phipps, who is the interim general manager for Reading Municipal Light Department to discuss the strategic overview, um, the power substation slash renewed interest in town property on Route one twenty-five and the exploration of solar panels at the Maple Meadow landfill. Good evening.
Good evening.
So we do have the presentation in hand, um, that was distributed to us by the manager. So we do have that. Um, we have not had an opportunity to read it ahead of time.
No, no problem at all.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to, this is kind of an introduction. There's a bit of history here, but also wanted to give you all a sense of what's happening in the world of energy, specifically electricity and why we are, uh, coming to, A, to give you an update in terms of what's going on, um, with Substation Five, but also, um, to ask your help. Uh, our, our goal here is, uh, you know, we are here to serve. RMLD is here to serve the residents and the communities and the customers in Wilmington, as well as Reading, North Reading and most of Lynnfield. Um, just as a reminder, so we are a municipally-owned utility. We're a not-for-profit utility. Um, our expenses equate to our rates. So we, uh, our charter is reliable, low-cost, non-carbon energy. Reliable in, in that priority, reliable, low-cost, non-carbon. And, um, obviously you guys are deeply aware of, uh, some of the external factors that are dramatically changing the electricity and the energy industry. Um, massive, massive changes. The twenty twenty-one, there was a climate bill known as S-nine that basically moved the metric, uh, against which we are held in compliance to of non-carbon. Um, we're very supportive of it. Um, I, I won't go into too much detail today, but our portfolio is already ahead of the targets that were set by the state. The, uh, low cost, um, you know, we, we work diligently to manage our power supply as well as our operating costs. We're literally in the process of doing our operating budget, but low cost is critically important. Uh, recently, many customers of RMLD have said it's good to be an RMLD customer as opposed to a IOU customer. Our rates are dramatically different and part of that is contextual and part of that is regulatory and that's part of it. It's how we run the business. But reliable is, is still the number one priority, right? So the lights need to be on, the heat needs to be on. With electrification tied to non-carbon, we're moving into the transportation business. We don't provide vehicles, but we provide the energy that moves vehicles. So there's a lot happening. So I wanted to give you a little bit of context, um, real quick. Um, so again, my name's Greg Phipps. Um, Ryan, uh, is part of our team as well. Ryan, uh, so I've been there about little, just under two years. I run the, uh, what is known as the Integrated Resources Division, which takes care of, uh, all power supply, rates, customer interaction, communications, webinars, all sorts of stuff, and, and currently serving as the interim general manager. Ryan joined us, uh, earlier this year. Um, he is actually one of the individuals that's helping us, uh, drive through this Maple Meadow landfill project and we'll give you an update on that as well. So tonight was mainly to give you a, a quick update. Um, we, uh, assuming that there's, uh, uh, interest in terms of us moving forward, um, we'll come back with a little more details. But I want to try and kind of give you guys a quick overview of, of what's happening. So I'll move, uh, fairly quickly. So context, Substation Five. Substation Five is the primary substation in Wilmington that supports the majority of the load in Wilmington. Um, we'll talk a little more about, about that. Um, we're in the process and we've got some good news, but we need some additional help in terms of the new Wilmington substation and then we'll talk about Maple Meadows in a second. Um, the slides are probably worth looking at a little bit later. Um, I'm, I'm not gonna read through each one, but I'm gonna try and give you the highlights, right? So first and foremost, um, we talked about reliable, low-cost, non-carbon. Um, but our, as a result of the electrification drive, which is part of non-carbon, um, load is increasing. So while it's, um, in terms of megawatt hours, we sell power in kilowatt hours, but on the wholesale side, we buy them in megawatt hours. It's a thousand times. So just the units. But the key thing is that it's growing somewhere around one, and as we get a little bit further out, one to two percent per year. It doesn't sound like a lot, but when you compound that, um, over ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years, our load will be somewhere between two-thirds and a hundred percent higher than it is today. Realize over the past decade, we are coming out of a decade from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty of basically flat growth. So there's, so in addition to all the contextual changes, our load growth is, is a significant piece. That curve to the right there, uh, uh, you guys see the mouse? So this basically is that two-thirds load growth, right? And then these different colored bars down here is our existing power portfolio supply. Um, and up to, you know, up to the top of the yellow, this is our non-carbon portfolio. As we get further out, this chart on the left here is twenty-twenty-one to twenty-fifty and this is megawatt hours on the left-hand side. Just kind of give you an idea of the context that we deal with. Um, the electricity business is a data-intensive business, right? We don't touch the product. We can't feel the product. The product has a life expectancy of less than a second, right? It's electricity. Um, so all the work that we do, obviously we do a lot of work to make sure poles are up and wires are up and transformers are up. But the product itself, we don't touch. So it's a very interesting business and it has a, again, a shelf life of literally zero. So we're in growth mode. As we talked about before, that S-nine, um, basically all supply needs to be non-carbon by twenty-fifty. There's a twenty-thirty metric, a fifty percent non-carbon, and then when we get into twenty-forty, seventy-five percent non-carbon. So that has a massive impact in terms of how we think about our business. But as you can see from this chart, we're already ahead of the curve. One interesting thing about, that makes it particularly challenging is non-carbon is typically intermittent, with the exception of nuclear, um, which, which can be twenty-four, seven, very stable. But everything else, wind and solar, um, and hydro, those three metrics or those three supplies are, they vary hour by hour, right? If the sun's not shining, there's no solar, obvious, right? If the wind's not blowing, there's no wind, right? If we're in, in a dry summer like August, there's not a lot driving to hydro facilities. That's okay, right? You know, and our goal here is to build the portfolio and to manage the portfolio to make sure that we have enough power. Cause remember, charter number one is reliable, right? Then low cost and then non-carbon. Part of the things that we're working on aggressively for a variety of reasons, partly economic and partly reliability, um, is we need to build generation within our territory. So right now, our total load is about a hundred and seventy megawatts. So just think of a hundred and seventy. And our generation within our territory is around eight, eight versus one-seventy. So everything beyond the eight, um, we buy outside. And everything we buy outside on the wholesale market has a forty percent premium on it because we pay capacity and transmission charges. And it all makes sense and it's all good, but to the extent that we can generate more power within our territory, there's an instant forty percent discount. Remember, our second charter is low cost, right? So we're aggressively, when we've been working on this now for a little over a year and a half, but we want to put more generation within our territory. Um, and we'll talk about that more in a minute. And then the other element, going back to the intermittent, is we also need to put storage, energy storage into our territory as well. So this is, we, we look at this as, as a fascinating problem to work on in terms of how you make intermittent supply feed a, a constant demand. Um, the last thing, which is pretty massive, happened about eight weeks ago now roughly, and that was the federal government passed the, um, Inflation Reduction Act. And the reason why that is massively important is that allows MLPs such as ourselves access to investment tax credits, which we historically never had access to. Those will come in the form of a grant. So now there's an opportunity for up to, well, in certain cases, over thirty percent of the cost, um, will have a grant associated with it as opposed to coming from our ratepayers. Again, we're not, there's no, the, the capital that we use is all ratepayer money, right? So we manage it very carefully. Those factors are very significant. So in the bottom here, again, we're doing lots of things, but things for tonight's discussion. As you guys know, we'll talk about Substation Five in a second here, but we're gonna build a substation in Wilmington and we continue to upgrade our distribution network to handle that growth in the upper right-hand corner. When we think of transformers and poles and wires and substations, they have anywhere from a twenty-year to a fifty-year life. So our time horizon is always looking way out. When we make investments, we're making investments that are gonna last at least twenty years. So we have to think long-term. Um, the second piece, and we just talked about this already, but, but we're gonna put more generation within our territory. There's a limit in terms of what we can do because realistically, there'll be no wind towers in our territory, right? There'll be no nuclear facilities in our territory. There'll be no hydro facilities in our territory, right? So, so we need to think out of the box. We will do everything we can to add more solar PV and we're gonna talk about that in a few minutes in the, in the form of Maple Meadow. Um, and then we're also looking to, so if you can't go up and you can't go out, the only place you can go is down. And so, you know, we're, we're looking, we're researching. We've got some skunk work projects with some, uh, some professors at the, the University of Massachusetts, Amherst, that are, that are interested, not interested, but are active in geothermal. And so we're looking at some low-temperature geothermal projects that might be a source of energy ten years, fifteen years down the road. So we're, we're, again, we think down the road, but the key need right now is, is solar PV. And then of course, we'll do a little bit, well, not little, we're gonna add some significant storage capability, which goes back to the intermittent need. So that's, that's the big context, right? So at the end of the, you know, so just to go back one, so we need to support increasing load. We've got to create within territory generation and we have to do it with non-carbon sources, right? So that's, it's much more complicated, but you got the big pieces, right? And, and, and that's what we're doing. Substation Five. So Substation Five is in, it serves as a significant piece of Wilmington, this territory. It's part of our network. It is end of life, right? It's not imminent, but it's end of life. So we need, in, I'll go through the, in a few moments, the, uh, our, our plan right now is to get the new substation. is to get the new substation built by 2025, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. But we need Substation Five, the existing one, to be reliable through 2026. And so the things that we're doing, right, you know, we're doing much more frequent inspections, much more frequent testing, there's a lot more maintenance, that second bullet B, all sorts of things that we do. So we, we are diligent in terms of making sure that this facility remains reliable. Back, we formalized a, a maintenance program back in 2014, so that's been ongoing through our engineering and operations group. We bought a bunch of spares on hand so that we're not waiting for a supply chain problem. If there, if we have a problem, we can take care of it right away. Part of taking care of it right away is, is early detection of issues, that's with that infrared temperature scanning, that's one of the many features we use. And then also, we have the ability, we're increasingly having the ability to move load around our network. So when we get into hot summer days, for example, when is when this system is most vulnerable, we, but we try and move loads around, and of course, we have a peak management program. So all said and done, we are very proactive in terms of making sure Substation Five goes through at least 2026 until we get the next substation in place. It's critically important for us, it's critically important for our customers, and in this case, this substation serves a good chunk of Wilmington. The new substation. So you guys have heard a couple of different presentations from the former general manager and the director of E&amp;O. We've numerous false starts relative to building a new substation. A new substation requires land. So we, we, back, no, no, let's see, springtime uncovered a property on 326 Ballard Vale. It was, the expression is, a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush, we, we have to have something. So through numerous speed bumps, et cetera, we were finally able to close on this property last Friday. And the default plan is actually to build the substation, the new Wilmington substation, on this site. The initial designs are complete, we've been working on those in parallel. The ISO New England Interconnection Study's already been submitted and received, and they're starting to process it. Some of, we've been working with the different departments within Wilmington, so some of the permits are, are processing, some of the applications are in. Our goal is to have this, we have a timeline and a schedule to have this operational by 2025. And we'll start at that point in time transferring load from Substation Five to what this will be called Substation Six. Real creative names. So that's our default plan. However, we, we, in the, in the midst of all the speed bumps that we had over the past several months trying to get 326 closed, we went back and looked at what other, what other alternatives do we have in case we can't get 326 closed? And so we dusted off some of the discussions on Route 125. So there's a lot more discussions to have, but I want, I, I, I'm looking for, you know, so we need your support to pursue, there's a lot of details to work through, but this is kind of a, hey, we want to come back and revisit the idea of figuring out a way where RMLD can own a three-and-a-half, four-and-a-half acre block of one of the properties that you, that the town of Wilmington owns off of Route 125. It's a, and we'll give you more details later on, but it's, it's this block here, right, right across the top here are national grid transmission lines. And again, the intention of a substation is to connect the transmission lines to our distribution network. The Ballard Vale property, if this map was, was exploded, expanded, would be a little bit further up on the same national grid transmission lines. So we're, we're trying to intersect on either one of the two points to bring power into the network to, to offload Station Five, that's the intention and the goal. If we were to put together, again, a lot of this, right, a lot of work to be done, well, a lot of work's already been done, but we need to, we're dusting them off. If we can actually put the substation at Route 125, the costs, the actual connection cost, the connections to the transmission lines would be somewhere between one and $2 million less. Remember, our second mission was low cost, right? So everywhere we can, we really try and be disciplined in terms of how we spend ratepayer money. That's, and that one to $2 million less is versus 326. The substation equipment itself is the same, whether it's at 326 or Route 125, the actual transformers, the switchgear, et cetera. So that's the same. And so we are, because of the famous, you know, supply chain issues, we are in the process now, starting to order the equipment, and it's a year to a year and a half, so that's all part of the timeline. So we're going to order it no matter what happens in terms of whether we're at 326 or 125. If, over the next several months, and again, a lot of discussions, we want some initial feedback from you guys right now, but if we can work out a program where we actually build the substation on Route 125, the question is now, what do we do with, with 326 property? And what we'll probably do is repurpose that into a larger storage, a much larger storage system, partly utility scale and partly distribution scale. And again, the idea behind storage, remember, the thing we talked about earlier is that renewable, I'm going to say renewable, non-carbon, well, renewable technically, is more intermittent. So we need to use storage basically to make sure that we take the supply that we generate within the territory and the supply that we pull from the outside and make sure that it matches. So when I talk about energy storage, these are large-scale batteries, two-megawatt batteries, four-megawatt batteries, are big batteries. Now, they would fit nicely into 326, and we're going to put, you know, our intention, we have a, we have a rollout of about, before we get to utility scale stuff, of about 40 to 50 megawatts of storage that we intend to lay out to actually get installed over the next two and a half years. And we need that to make sure that that big, that big bolus of renewables fits into the portfolio. So I'm going to pause here just for a second, I've got a lot of information in front of you, right? The context is reliable, low-cost, non-carbon. The, the world of electricity has changed dramatically. We have Substation Five that we are, we are going to baby, I say that word nicely, we're going to, we're going to take very good care of it, so it takes us through 2026 for our benefit, but more importantly, for you. We're looking at, we've, we've, we're now in motion finally, we actually have some land that we can use for the new substation, but we're coming back and looking at Route 125 as a better alternative in terms of being lower cost, a better connection, it's just, it's a, it's a better site for a whole bunch of reasons. And we, we're going to dig into it more deeply and make some detailed presentations unless you guys say, stop. So that's, and I'm not asking for a voter-ing like that, but just, you know, if, if there's no, if there's no initial reactions right now, you can take a look at it, we don't have to make a decision right now, but this is one, one initiative before we talk about Maple Meadow that we need your support on. So that's the big question. So questions so far?
So I would say just for the benefit of the public-
Oh, yes, please.
And also for the benefit of the board, for people, we, we all haven't been at the, the table at the same time-
Oh, right, right.
For prior presentations, and for people that might need to kind of connect the dots to how the town fits into the 125 site, and that you need Wilmington's support to pursue. I think it would kind of color the picture a little bit better for people to-
Yeah, I'll give much more detail. I'll give you, I'll give you a quick verbal one.
Yeah, if you can just give the connections so people know why you're, you-
Yeah.
You need the town's endorsement.
So, so this is a smaller picture, this is actually Route 125 north is up. This little green, so this little green box is at the northern tip of a piece of property that is, I think, about 30 acres that the town of Wilmington owns. And it, it goes deeper. It, 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 there are some wetlands, it is linked, so there's a lot of details relative to art, to a whole bunch of stuff we have to walk through. The, the aquifer that you guys use is down in this area down here, so there's a lot of things we want to be careful of as we do the preparation. But the intention, so a, a typical substation of about 75 megawatt size, we originally were planning, when we first started the whole program, seven years ago, eight years ago, it was going to be somewhere between a 40 and 50 megawatt substation. In the context of non-carbon, with load growth going to almost double in the next 30 years, and again, our time horizon is 30, 30 years, we would, we'd basically build a substation that would include some storage in a, a chunk of land, about four acres, it would be in the northern tip of land that the town of Wilmington currently owns. There's more details in terms of how that would possibly work, but as two municipal entities, there's mechanisms in place from, at a state level that would allow us to do that, but we've got to lay out a lot more details for you. The key thing is, we'd have to replace that land because it's Article 97 with other land, either nearby or somewhere else in the town of Wilmington area, and we've got, the good news is, we have some, we now have some options in terms of creating some options that would allow that to happen. Two years ago, two and a half years ago, I think this whole thing kind of stumbled when a third party, a, a, a private owner of some land further west of this, there was a, there was a swap and a request for zoning and all sorts of stuff that I think muddied the water. I don't, I have just, I wasn't here at the time, but I have some of the background details. So our intention right now is to make the process simpler, but the, and, and right above here, I think I mentioned this before, right above here is where the transmission lines are. So at the end of the day, the reason why we can't just put a substation anywhere, it needs to be near transmission lines. And the transmission lines are the tall towers, they're usually, well, not usually, well, in our area, they're usually in pairs. So the good news for us, as RMLD, back to reliability, is there are a pair of lines that run through the territory, particularly Wilmington, this part of Wilmington, that are national grid. And then in the southern part of Wilmington, which actually will impact the next slide, Maple Meadow, there are two transmission lines that are ever-source. So from a reliability perspective, you know, our, again, our intention is to be a little bit more independent from the, from the grid, not separate, but a little bit more independent, so we have a little bit more control, and also, well, it's a reliability play here, it's a reliability and cost play. So that's a big context.
Sure. I mean, I would say from my standpoint, you know, anytime, I can't, I'm only one member of the board-
Yep.
But I'm always interested in new and innovative ways of doing business. Certainly, RMLD is front and center, provides power for the community. We are definitely a large player for you-
Absolutely.
In terms of a, you know, membership within your organization. But to that point, I, I think we're not going to probably solve this tonight-
No, no.
But I'm very interested in-
Yeah.
Knowing how it's mutually beneficial to all parties involved. And obviously, you know, I would be relying on the town manager and town personnel to advise us, you, you mentioned about our water sources-
Yep.
-in being in close proximity, and obviously, you know, what the land use arrangement would be, whether you would be procuring that and owning it outright, or if you'd be looking for a long-term lease agreement, you know, all, all the logical questions-
There's a lot of options that are exactly right.
Knowing that, you know, you know, liability and, and just all of a, a whole myriad of questions that wouldn't be answered tonight.
Correct.
So I'm always having an eye on the present and future for what's best for the community, but, you know, I'm one person.
Yep, no, it's-
So I don't know if anyone else has a question or a comment, I'll, I saw Greg, and then I'll come back to you.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, both of you, and thank you for the presentation thus far. Appreciate your efforts on behalf of our residents. Just a point of clarification, and perhaps, Madam Chair, through you to the manager, but just for context and the spirit of-
Please.
Background, we did look at this property a couple of years back for the purpose of a fire substation. And there, we, you know, come to find out, there's, there's quite a few, it's problematic in that it's steeply downhill, that it comes out onto a 50 mile an hour road, and then it's, as you mentioned, Chapter 97 land, which would require us to swap another piece of land. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, this is where I was hoping to, prepared to stand corrected, but I believe you also need a two-thirds vote from the state legislature-
Yes.
To acquire that. So that was also going to be a-
Yep.
Easier said than done type of thing-
Correct.
That we were aware of. But would that still be the case with your group, even though, I mean, it's not a municipality?
Well, so we, there's, there's several approvals required, but in the context, so what's, what is, there's a, so the world has changed pretty, pretty dramatically in the past two and a half years. And so there is, there is interest to figure out how to support the transition to non-carbon. This is, this is a piece of that puzzle. So while we don't have it all pre-sold, and we'll talk, and Maple Meadows will be another creative piece, but it's going to be even, I won't say more wild, but more out of the park. We're actually probably going to try and do the two of them simultaneously to do, so we do need state-level support and approvals. So so far, and I'll talk about this a little bit more in the context of the, the Maple Meadow site, is everybody we've talked to has been encouraging us to keep moving forward because it's, again, back to Madam Chair, your comment, it, it's mutually beneficial to the town of Wilmington as well as to the customers of RMLD, of which the town of Wilmington residents are a significant piece.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, for that opportunity, I just wanted to make sure, some people at home, you can understand, some people at home might say, well, they got 30 acres of town-owned land, how come they're not, you know, slapping something else there?
Oh, yeah, it's, yeah, right.
So thank you for that opportunity, Madam Chair, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. DePalmer?
Thank you. This property that you're looking at, M125, is the property that you gave before the board?
Yes, two years ago.
Two years ago.
Two, three years ago, yeah.
When the sky was falling and everything else?
Yep, the sky was falling, right.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I wasn't here, but yes, that's what I heard, so.
If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, there were a number of issues with that, with the water.
Ownership.
Ownership, which I believe we got resolved.
Yes.
It's, as you said, 97.
Yes. Article 97, yes.
And wetlands, of course-
Yes.
Attached to it. How do you feel that you're going to be able to resolve those issues? Or is there a way to resolve those issues prior to?
Yeah, so eat, so there's a bunch of road bumps, right? At the end of the day, in the context that we are operating, we have to think out of the box, right? We have to create new models, new business models, et cetera. So in certain cases, we're, we're creating a new wheel, and this one, we're dusting off an old one and, and working through the issues. I think both on the, on the context of which RMLD's operating, but also the context of which the town of Wilmington is operating, for example, the potential fire station, and then, hey, you know, maybe it's not the best place to put it for a whole bunch of reasons. What's unique about a substation is a substation, there's not a lot of traffic, right? It gets put in place, it's monitored, et cetera. It, it, there's a lot of big benefits of it, many of them logistical, many of them economic, and there are other things we have to walk through. I think the other big difference is that we now have some additional options that we didn't have two and a half years ago. And at that point in time, you know, that was the, that was the last resort, and the sky's falling, and we don't do something now, you know, all the lights are going to go out. So the, the world's changed since then, right? And so, I, I, again, we can walk through each one of them, and we'll do that at, at the next meeting, but we wanted to alert you and, and express our, our, our interest in this, in the context of us trying to do reliable, low-cost, non-carbon.
I, I, I would reserve judgment until we see your presentation on it.
Perfect.
But it is, again, we fall back to when the sky was falling.
Yeah.
It was an interesting concept.
Yeah.
Part two of my question is, you made a comment that turbines are not for this area?
Wind turbines.
Wind turbines?
So large, so, so there's a state law that, so, so yes, so large-scale, you know, four, 500-foot wind turbines would require a special passage and ledgers-
They're out at sea.
They're out at sea, yeah. Now, there's some, there are, there are different areas, but we're fairly populated, and one of the existing Massachusetts laws is that you can't have a building that is inhabited within one and a half times the height of a tower. And the definition of inhabited under that law is if somebody goes into it more than 24 hours over the course of a year. So any building near it, so the practicality of putting wind turbines in our territory is, is, is pretty darn low, like near zero.
What, what?
I like wind, by the way, a lot, but it, you know, this, this isn't part of the place to put them, yeah.
I think, I think they're all going to serve a purpose for us eventually.
Absolutely, you've got to have a miss.
But with the solar, there was, I've always wondered why we, we, we weren't able to put any solar on, uh-
A lot of things.
-damaged ground.
Can I transition to the next?
You can do that, as long as I know that there isn't anybody else that has any questions on this.[1723.75] questions on this. Do you, are you, are you done with your comments on that part? Yep, yep.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, absolutely.
I do understand the need, the importance of a substation for, for the community, for sure.
Yes.
But when you had briefly mentioned about an issue that took place maybe a couple of years ago, where there was going to be a possible hotel, a land swap, but we're going to put in the substation and the whole bit, and the community came out pretty strongly opposed to touching Article 97 land at all. So, just so that you're well aware of that.
Good context, right? And, and that's why we wanted to come to you now and get some of the feedback and some of the potential roadblocks?
Yeah, that was a big issue in, in putting something on that property where, you know, it's, it's.
Yeah, so, just for clarification, again, there was other potential issues with other properties adjacent to it, and hopefully, we can avoid all that. This would not be any sort of hotel, this would be a substation.
Oh, no, I understand.
Well, just for the clarification of-
It's still on 97 land, right? It's still on conservation issue?
Yes, 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 absolutely is.
The aquifer, is there still an issue over there?
Absolutely, and it has to be addressed.
Right. And, and does this facility, what if it, you know, breaks down? Are there pollutants? Is it releasing any? You know, there's a lot of issues that-
Those are all the things that we want to walk through very carefully, so wherever we put it.
Especially when you have another piece of, especially you have another piece of property at 326 Ballardville, right, that you could use this for?
Well, well, yes. And, and again, we'll, in the, in the new world of energy, we, we need space, and there's a limited amount of space. And, and the drive to be non-carbon has land needs and cost needs and creative thinking needs. And so, that's what we're trying to put in place, and we're trying to create as many options as we can. And we can't do them, well.
No, I, I understand, and that's 30 acres of land, the town-owned land that you're kind of carving into, which may then limit the town for future use as well. Even though this is important, future use for the town, for sure, we need to address, we don't want the lights to go out on us, you know?
Yeah, and again, and I think-
Chicken little with the sky falling.
No, 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 I think, again, at the end of the day, right, we're not a, we're not a pub, you know, we're not a investor-owned utility with a different set of motives. Again, our motive, and I mean literally, is to serve the community, right? And, and we take it seriously, right? And there are trade-offs, no matter what, as you guys know, right? I mean, you guys, every day, you know, either business or here, you're making trade-offs and decisions. So, so my intention is to get all, you know, as much of the facts, address as many of the issues, and come to you and say, hey, look, you know, here, here's all the, here's all the trade-offs and swaps, et cetera. You know, as we dig into it, we might say, hey, look, it doesn't make sense for us. I, I don't think so, but again, based on all the work that's already been done, but I think your point is well-taken. There's trade-offs to be made, and let's make sure that together, we, we do the best option we can.
And let's say that this goes through, you get a substation here, or you get a substation on Ballardville Street, number six. So, what happens to number five? That's on what, Wildwood? Is that where that is?
Yes, so, so we will-
It's not going to be an eyesore there?
Well, we, so, there are two other elements, yeah, so, we will prob, so there's a couple of different options in terms of what we do with that property, which will be part of the mix of everything here. But once the new substation in place, that, that will no longer be a substation. It could be a switching, it could be a whole bunch of different things, but it, it'll depend, it'll depend upon all the different moving pieces that we move around. At the end of the day, you know, our intention is to optimize the network, again, reliable, low-cost, non-carbon, but also in, in the interest of what is the best use of land from a town perspective. Again, we're here to serve the community, so, and we, you know, you know, we, we know there's trade-offs, right? You know, I've been in business a long time, and there's trade-offs you make every day. So, so I'm going to, is that okay? I'll transition to-
Yeah, sure.
So, so the concept we made, you know, the concept we talked about a moment ago, right? Wind is up, right? Solar is horizontal, there's only so much land. So, this is Maple Meadow. And, and I don't know about all the background, we're learning a lot about Maple Meadow, but Maple Meadow is in the southern portion of Wilmington. It's also in RMLD territory. Right down here, you can see the mouse, this little line right here is the ever-source transmission lines. Now, this particular area is not close to a lot of the load. Most of the load and the load growth, and oh, by the way, you know, I've got meetings this week with new customers that would like to come into the area, which is a benefit from the town's perspective, but also allows us to sell more energy, you know, help, the low rates are our attraction to bring additional businesses into the community, which generally speaking, is a good thing. But this case, this one is not near any load growth. I shouldn't say load growth. It's in the southern area, it's not like the other area that we talked about for, before, 125 in Ballardville. So, there's a deep history behind this. This is, Madam Chair, this is, this is under the context of thinking out of the box, I mean, literally thinking out of the box. The, the big picture is, is this circled area here is a mound of contaminated dirt, and there's often, we, well, let me, let me actually take a step back. So, so we've had a bunch of discussions with the encouragement and support of, of members of, you know, the town manager, and our CAB representative, and just, you know, introductions. And we basically started pushing on this to see, are we pushing on a string? Are we running against a brick wall? Or can, is there, is there some opportunity to utilize this land for a couple of different benefits, right? Again, these are mutual benefits to both the town, as well as RMLD service, you know, in terms of serving the town. So, we've talked with Mass DEP, we've talked with the town environmental consultant, we've talked with the EPA, we've talked with the owner of Olin, we've talked with a couple of other, and we actually walked the site with Mass DEP. And again, we're, we're trying to move this fairly quickly. And again, part of the context is that IRA funding, the Inflation Reduction Act, which has a direct impact on this particular site in terms of how we do it. We looked at this as an opportunity to try and create a solar array. Again, there's not a lot of land, and this is, this is a half-finished landfill, I say that with, with deep respect. And it's very typical in Massachusetts to take landfill projects, right, and, and do something, I say do something useful with them, but you know, solar is a great thing to put on top of a landfill. And so, that's what we're trying to do. This has all sorts of roadblocks, but nothing insurmountable yet, right? You know, it's like that first bullet underneath here, right? Many details to work through with the mouse, right? But no brick walls yet, right? Our, our big-picture intention, kind of back to, you know, how you think about the land, this particular land, we're probably one of the very few entities that are willing to own this land. And so, this one might be different than what we think about with Route 125. But there's a scenario, and again, we're still looking at options, but there's a scenario where we actually take ownership of the land, there is a tax liability on it that needs to be paid. The intention would be to pay that tax liability, again, to the benefit of the town of Wilmington. But we're trying to make sure that as we do this, we don't incur some of the historical liabilities, given the fact that it has a linkage to the Olin site, which is a superfund site. Now, the fact that it's linked to it, it's not, it's not a superfund site, but some of the plume goes through this, this area up here, let's see, the mouse doesn't quite go over there, but okay, in this area. So, so in this, this area in the northern part where the mouse is, sorry, in that northern area is, is part of the Maple Middle, it's kind of, it's wetlands, and then where the big circle is, is the high pile of dirt. We, as a municipal utility, need to be very careful that we don't incur liabilities on behalf of our ratepayers, right? There's no external ownership body, or, you know, the ratepayers are who we serve. So, we, the guidance that we've received so far, given the unique situation of this site, would allow RMLD to probably acquire this site, again, a lot of steps to work through, and, and leave, leave with the superfund, leave with the EPA, the historical, and the former owners, et cetera, leave those historical liabilities. Obviously, if we do something in the future, that would be our responsibility, but that's not our intention. Our goal is solar, right? It's pretty straightforward stuff. The Inflation Reduction Act dramatically improves the financial model. And, oh, by the way, remember I said in the very beginning that if we generate electricity within our territory, there's an instant 40% discount. So, that combined with the likely qualification for IRA investment tax credits, plus another 10% tied to the fact that it is associated with a brownfield site, this system could generate power at less than half of our average cost of energy right now. So, again, remember the second bullet, low cost, the first bullet, reliable, and the third bullet, in terms of our charter, non-carbon, it hits all three. So, again, we, again, it's not obvious how we pull this off. You are a critical party for this, you don't own this land right now, but in order to clear everything up, you guys would, you guys would be involved in the transaction. So, this is different than 125, but this is us looking at a, a, a creative model to take, to take a piece of land that's currently unused and has a lot of negative history and turn it into something positive. More details to work through, we just wanted to kind of give you an idea that, like, we are, we are not only actively chasing this, but based on the meetings we've had with Mass DEP and others, we've actually commissioned an initial water, wetlands delineation study, that hopefully get done in the next few weeks. So, we're actually putting our money where our mouth is, not big sums, but, but we think this has merit, and we are, we are actively pursuing it, and we're going to come, as we kind of develop more fully, we're going to come to you with more specific plans and what your role will be in it. But this goes to the idea of taking, taking a piece of land that is, that is not of much use to just about everybody, and we've, we've, I think we've figured out a solution. There's work to be done, but, but we're excited about this being a solution to, to a piece of land that's currently unused.
So, thank you for that. I, I don't want to spot you with this, but you talked about two major initiatives that would, you know, you talked about savings and reduction.
Yeah.
Do you feel in earnest that if these two projects, or, or one or both came to fruition, that a Wilmington customer for RMLD will see a change in their bill, meaning it will definitely go down?
So, as we, so the answer to your question, definitely go down, no. There is upward pressure on rates, there's dramatic upward pressure on rates, and rates are driven by cost structure. And cost structure, 70% of the cost structure is driven by power supply. So, this will reduce the upward pressure, it'll create downward pressure on Wilmington customers. In addition to some of the other items that we will, there's some other financial benefits to the town of Wilmington as well. So, to the answer to your question on this particular one, if we can pull this off, yeah, it's a massive win, massive. But we got work to do.
I think it's just, you know, important just for the optics, because, you know, a lot of laypeople, including myself, don't understand how power is, is bought and sold, and how, you know, this would, that, you know, this, your bill would otherwise have been driven to X.
This is downward, yeah, this is downward pressure.
Instead, now it's Y, and they're looking for it, that they're going to get a coupon. And so, I want to make sure that we kind of hit that off at the pass, so that would be one.
That's, that's a good problem, thank you.
Because a lot of times, even though our municipal tax rate is going down, people still see an increase in their tax bill, and they wonder why their tax bill didn't go down. But their property appreciated, you know, in that given year, because the market, you know, so enough about that. So, that would be one. And then, two, there's two major initiatives that come across a lot of different areas, and I'm going to spot you, Jeff, because I'm looking at this as a board that we're elected, we all have different backgrounds, we all have different expertise and strengths, and we're going to be asked to make decisions on this, and we're going to be relying on our town team, our legal officials, you know, our contracted services, you know, our CAB membership with RMLD. So, can you speak as the manager, and knowing, you know, presenting this to me as the chair to put on the agenda, how we're going to assemble a town team to explore these items? So, to Selectman Kyra's points, to Selectman Bendel's points, that these have been looked at, you know some of the prior issues, I was not on the board during that time. Kevin had shared that, you know, some concerns about prior initiatives and what the feedback was regarding the 97, you know, land. Those are all valid points. To your situation, you are the interim general manager, you have to be looking at a full menu of options, you have to be working the street, you don't get what you don't ask for, you need to present options, and you need to do your job. And so, I respect that. So, it's like, how do you balance the two? And respectfully stated, our fiduciary responsibility is to Wilmington and do what makes sense, and also protect the environment, and be sensitive to a superfund site and all of the pending litigation that we have with Olin, and the fact that, you know, we don't want to, not necessarily hold on to a land and not repurpose it, but we don't want to skip over, you know, pending litigation, potential future litigation. So, there's a lot of moving parts. We're having this, you know, wide open and public, as we should, it should be a transparent conversation. But this really brings up a lot of questions for me that I'm not prepared to answer, other than to say I'm open-minded to look at it. So, I'm going to turn to you, Jeff, if you can share with our board, you know, what conversations you've had, and, and what type of town team you could assemble.
Well, so, first of all, George Hooper, who's one of the CAB members, as well as Greg and myself, have met, I think, on a couple of occasions to talk about both these options. And I, I also believe it's worth, at least at this stage, exploring the options, whether or not they come to fruition, you know, remains to be seen based upon due diligence. With respect to this particular piece, excuse me, the, the Maple Meadow landfill unfortunately was a partially capped landfill. So, the prior owners had done some work associated with it, or they had contracted for that work, and it was never fully completed, and that goes back probably 20-plus years. DEP has been monitoring it since. Certainly, one of the things I would be very mindful of is understanding where DEP is on this, what their concerns are. You know, they're, they're basically the primary stewards of, you know, limiting the exposure in that space. Certainly, going forward, as we get into this, I would look to be consulting with our environmental folks, GeoInsight, to get their perspective on what the risks are, the, you know, the downsides, what the concerns would be. Certainly, you know, dealing in, with our own departments, our planning conservation director, just in terms of the role that, that they play on this. Our, on the other site, that is, as was noted in 90, Article 97, that property has been, was purchased, I believe in the '30s, for protecting the Browns Crossing Wellfield. Again, I, I didn't want to be dismissive of at least reconsidering it for this specific purpose. I think some of the issues that we're going to need to be mindful of are, what are the risks to that area in terms of, should some kind of exposure happen? What are the mechanisms that a substation can have put in place to minimize any kind of leakage of oils or whatever might be contained there? Again, relying upon our environmental consultants to look at that, you know, they presumably have history in other communities working with similar situations to know, you know, what the potential exposures are, what, what are the means to mitigate that. Clearly, one of the issues that we have to be mindful of is just the legislative hurdles. In this case, it requires, as I recall, the unanimous consent of the Conservation Commission, it requires, I believe, at least two-thirds approval at town meeting, not to mention, as was previously noted, the two-thirds approval from both branches of the legislature. I think there's a executive body that the governor appoints that may also weigh in. So, there's multiple checks in, in the system there. So, you know, I, I'm open to at least exploring the ideas. You know, I think one of the questions, I guess, from Greg's standpoint is timing, you know, just from the standpoint, again, focused on the North Wilmington piece, 125, you know, I don't know if there's a, a window of time beyond which it just doesn't economically make sense for, for RMLD to pursue this. I, I suspect, and I don't know for certain, that just from a decision-making process to get all the approvals I just referenced, is going to take, you know, more than a year, probably more than two years perhaps, I don't know. But, you know, that's something, again, that would have to be explored. Is, is the fact that this is a, a municipal light company providing potentially additional power, does that in, in some manner expedite the process? You know, that remains to be seen, I guess. So, there's a lot of questions, but we'll certainly be relying upon both internal staff. Again, here in the North Wilmington case, I'd want to be, and have had conversations with our Public Works personnel, currently Jamie McGauley, the Public Works Director, as well as Joe LeBeau, who's the deputy director, but his focus has, has historically been on the water side, so getting their input on, on what their concerns might be. Obviously, you know, we're all sensitive to water quality, it's no, you know, it's no, it's not an unknown that we've lost five of our nine drinking water wells to the Olin superfund site. to the Olin Superfund site. So, we're very concerned and understandably, I think cautious about jeopardizing any additional sources of municipal water.
Yes.
Can I continue on with my, my question that I had earlier?
Yes.
Just one que, excuse me. One question regarding the Maple Meadows. Probably about a year ago, I know there was a gentleman that was trying to present solar to Redding Light. And it was, I guess it was deemed, from the way I understand it, too far away from Ballard Vale at the time, is, uh, or whatever the case may be. What makes it more pertinent now? Is it because of the reduction we need in fossil fuels?
Yeah, so I think there are two big drivers from a couple of years ago. One is what is known as S nine, that twenty-twenty-one climate bill that mandates non-carbon, right? We're going to get to net zero non-carbon by twenty-fifty, which seems like a long time away, but it really isn't, at our horizon. So, that, that's one difference. The second difference, that's the big driver. The, the second piece, though, is this IRA as an accelerant. Like, we would, if the IRA, if the, if the ITC, the Investment Tax Credit tied to the Inflation Reduction Act, didn't come into play, we would still be pursuing this. Because at the end of the day, it's about economics. And one of the things that's different with an MLP, a municipal light plant, is we don't have a profit motive, right? We're, our goal is to minimize our costs. And again, our cost structure is seventy percent power supply, right? And so, I mean, we, we look at every, all the dollars we spend, but we spend a lot of time there. This particular site being within territory, again, within our, so this is not where, you know, the difference is, is that it's an RMLD generator, not a third-party selling to RMLD. So, that changes the economics dramatically. This site deserves, I mean, it's different uses, but it, because of what it is, it, it, it's begging for generation.
I'd be interested in that for solar. Very interested. Thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah.
Over to my right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, thank you both for the presentation this evening. You know, I too am open to this. I hope you don't take my comments earlier as a negative pushback. I just wanted to provide that context, maybe somebody who's listening saying, wait a minute, we've got this property, we've got other needs too. But, uh, so, thank you for allowing me to provide that. But I wonder, well, and I too, you know, think that this is worthy of exploration. You know, we certainly should be, you know, looking into this. As was mentioned by a number of my colleagues and the manager, obviously, there's a need. And so, I appreciate you bringing this to us. It certainly brings a lot of questions, as the chair mentioned. I wonder, to you, question, you know, part of the process is obviously going to the House and Senate. Have you approached any of the legislators about filing a bill?
Yep. Informally, we've started to, and there's, there's support.
Okay.
So, again, we have, we need to work through the proper channels.
Sure.
But, yeah, that, um, there's, everybody that we've talked to has, has not only said a good idea, they've encouraged us to keep moving forward and to make this a reality.
That's great to hear. You know, I just, you know, it's one, it's part of the process.
Oh, it is.
Obviously, we internally would, you know, put a lot of effort towards it. I know you folks are putting an awful lot of effort into it, and certainly we would hope that that would be like the third prong, you know, that there would be some legislation to go along that would be filed before the, you know, end of the session or the next session, because that's
Exactly right.
that's approaching, right?
We're going to
That's a reality, right?
We learned, you know, Friday and today that we should, we, we should be moving, like, running if we're going to.
Right, so.
There's, there's windows that
Can I jump in on that with you?
Yeah, and I'll just close by saying thank you, and thank you for bringing this before the Selectmen, because this is super important. So, thank you, thank you both.
So, if I just jump on and piggyback his question, Greg's question is to ask you, do you have examples in Massachusetts where this has been done for super fund sites that have been repurposed with solar? Has Massachusetts taken this initiative elsewhere?
So, they've definitely taken landfills and put solar. Like, this is one of the last few that have not done it. And then, super funds, I believe there are two, but I haven't, again, our, our goal right now was, again, real quickly to see there's any, like, major roadblocks. So, that's why we tried to touch base initially and say, hey, look, you know, is this a brick wall, or should we keep going? And, and, you know, we expected to hear, you know, there's going to be road bumps, but what we really heard is an encouragement to go forward. I, I will take the action and look at other super fund sites. There are several in Massachusetts. I will double-check to see the com, you know, again, this is a little bit unique, but I'll find something close to it, and when we come back again, report back to it.
Okay.
Report back to you.
Madam Chair, just to, just to comment, and I don't, well, I'm not sure if the site is a, um, a super fund site or not, but I know there is a particular location in Billrica off of, I believe it's Pond Street, and I forget the, um, outfit that was responsible for the contamination, but there are solar panels that have been on, on that particular location for probably ten years.
Okay, thank you.
And just in Lubbock, too. I mean, right, not far from here or there.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I, this may, this question might be a little premature right now of drilling down too far, but it was mentioned that this area is ha, half capped. So, if you
It's not capped at all.
It's not capped at all? Okay, I thought I heard someone say it was half capped.
It's half prepared, so the material on top of, so our understanding, talking to the various entities, there's material on it, there's supposed to be a base for the cap, but it's basically been stalled since twenty oh fi, oh, four, oh, three?
Early two thousand.
Early two thousand, almost twenty years.
So, if you were to put solar on this piece of property,
We have work to do.
you would have to cap it
Well, so that's
in its entirety before solar goes on it?
He considers it to be stable. So, unless we really dug deep or shaped it the wrong way, then it would become unstable and contaminated again. But when it's considered stable, we're not putting solar just on it, wouldn't cause any further contamination.
But if you're going to do land on top of a landfill that's, now you're telling me is not capped, you're going to put equipment on there that's going to bring in solar, right? You're going to move trucks in there? You're going to cause vibration issues? But you're not going to cap it first?
No, no, I didn't say that.
Oh, okay.
No, no, no.
That's what I was saying, okay.
No, no, don't forgive me. The current status right now is that it is not capped. And so, that's, so what we, when we, again, you know.
I would just, just if I could jump in a quick second. I think there needs to be some clarity here, that there, there, it's not like the, um, the landfill is just a raw landfill that's sitting there exposed to nature. There, there was a level of capping that was done, and I don't know the technical terms, but my understanding was that there was a base layer, I think, as you noted, of material that DEP required that covers this, um, this landfill. The expectation was that beyond that, there was going to be a second layer, at least one additional layer of some kind of composite earth material that would have finished the job. Unfortunately, because of financial circumstances and others, that second effort, so to speak, that second, um, process never took place. So, the property has been monitored for twenty years now by DEP. There's a gentleman that goes out there probably at least once a year, maybe twice a year, does a site inspection, reports back in terms of the conditions. And I think, as was noted, it, generally speaking, has been pretty stable, notwithstanding the fact that only this first layer of earth and material was placed there.
One other clarification is this is, when we talk about this kind of a landfill, this has a diff, this is not a traditional landfill with plastic bags and dishwashers and decomposing material. It is primarily dirt, but it's contaminated dirt all the way. It's the first two or three layers, which is a different kind of contaminated dirt, and then there's this various levels anywhere from thirty feet up to hundred and forty feet. So, it's, when, when we talk about it, and again, that's why we spent time, we've several calls, and then the, the site tour with MassDEP, to create options, to say, like, what could we really do in the context of, you know, making sure we don't create any new contamination problems? But this, this is a atypical, you know, back to town manager's comment. This is an atypical site that actually, given the fact of what it is, it gives us flexibility. So, we have four different scenarios in terms of how we might be able to do it. That's part of the reason why we're, we commissioned that initial, you know, water delineation, the, the wetland delineation project, just to, again, at the request of MassDEP. They said it would be really helpful for us, for them to help us kind of figure out what to do. And then, there's a variety, there's a whole bunch of people involved in this that would, we would need help to make this a reality. But again, the economics of, of us being RMLD as an MLP allow, it's economically very viable for us to pursue this, if we can get through all of the different roadblocks, et cetera. And there are lots of them, but none of them are stopped. They're all, please continue.
Okay, so in summary, I think, you know, we have a real good grasp on this presentation.
Please, yeah.
We thank you very much for all of your time. Is there anyone here on the board that feels inclined to say anything further, ask anything further? Okay, so I think we'll bring it to a close and just in summary, say thank you, and just to keep the lines of communication open with the manager, and we'll respond accordingly.
Thank you for the time.
Okay?
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, at this time, an entertaining motion for a brief recess.
So moved.
Motion to the mayor of a second, all those in favor, unanimous, okay?
Good evening, Madam Chair, and this is the board. Unfortunately, we need more than one minute.
Night, something came up, he gave us call, said he was unable to attend. Dan Pallado will, will fill in for him. We have a presentation that'll give you an update on the status of both projects that we have going. We also have Phil O'Brien, once we get to that section of the presentation, that he'll, he'll jump in. Go ahead.
Yes, please, thank you.
So, we'll start with the Senior Center this evening. As you're aware, we, we've been working on this project for a while. The project started with programming, trying to figure out the existing space needs and the future space needs for the seniors. The programming is linear in form at the beginning. The programming then becomes space blocks, and we work on determining what, what, what programming needs, interior and exterior graphically. We then start putting the blocks together into adjacencies, what goes good with what, you know, obviously, the kitchen needs to be next to the cafeteria and things of that nature. We then start the shape of the building, and as we, we, this is a plan of the input, the back and forth between the building committee and the architect, documenting everything that people liked and people didn't like. We, 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 we did this for months, back and forth, to get the plan. Tail, uh, overhangs for passive energy, increase of entry dormer glass to try and define the entrance from the parking lot. And we, we tried to incorporate high, high windows and trellis-like porches for shade in the summertime for the rear of the building. This was the preferred exterior design, what you'd see at the entrance of the building at the drop-off. This is the site. Obviously, it's next to St. Dorothy's. There's a drop-off right here. You can pull up, drop off, and park. There's outdoor activity, pickleball courts in the back. There was outdoor activities in a patio in, in the front of the building, and there's landscaping for the neighbors and landscaping on Main Street. There will be some raised planters for vegetable growing and things of that nature, all handicap accessible, a bocce court, and a large space for outdoor activities. The building committee has met twenty-seven times, hosted two community information sessions, one in March, one on June eighth, and we have produced video for the community members who were unable to attend the community meeting. We've also had two mailers in your local water bill, with the third mill are coming out soon. We've produced a number of newsletters, and on the right, you can see the mailers and the information brochures. We intend to do another mailer, another newsletter, once the Finance Committee holds their public hearing and determines how the financing of the project will occur for the voters to vote on at town meeting. The next step is public information sessions on November second in the afternoon at the Senior Center and at the evening at the, at the middle school?
Town Hall.
Town Hall, I'm sorry, Town Hall. Appropriation at special town meeting, and we'll go into design development, construction, and bidding documents, receive the bids, build the new center, and move from the Brazil to the new center and, and open the new building. Costs, total, total project cost is seventeen nine million, seventeen million nine hundred and fourteen thousand, of which you've already appropriated six hundred and fifty thousand for the study portion of it. So, once you take, we're going to be looking for the balance at town meeting. So, seventeen million, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars. And I know I'm not as eloquent as Lee, but I did my best to try and go through this as quickly as I could for you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
So, any questions on the Senior Center?
I do not have any. Do any of my fellow board members have any questions or comments?
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for being here and for the presentation. Obviously, had the good fortune of serving with you folks for almost two years on, on the committee, and so, I applaud all of you for your efforts here. Certainly, it's been a long road to arrive at this evening, and of course, on November nineteenth. And although, I'll fully admit, I was, I was opposed to the location, you know, wasn't the, won't be the last time I lose, but I think I was overruled, and that's quite okay. That's the way this works. And so, certainly, I look forward to having everybody the opportunity to vote come November nineteenth, and certainly, a lot of work has gone into it, so each member of the committee should be applauded. So, I, I thank you all, and I look forward to the nineteenth, so thank you.
Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you. Great report. I thought you came in on the dollar wise about where I know I was suspecting, even though we were talking lower when this all started. But I just want to encourage everyone to get out on November nineteenth and vote for the Senior Center. It's something that we not only need, the seniors in town deserve.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think, you know, obviously, you did a great job in going through it, you know, very quickly. I appreciate that, and I know you're running long on time, but
I didn't want to go too fast.
I, having been, you know, involved in projects in the past, I just, you know, it, it can't be overstated, just the effort on the part of, of all of you, the volunteers. You know, George, you know, you, you were in the leadership role. I mean, you're working a full-time daytime job here. You're responsible, you know, for headcount, working with all the different departments. You pretty much touch everywhere in town. I see a lot of the people that are part of your committee that are here. I don't want to name everybody by name because I, I'm sure I will miss somebody. But just the volunteerism that's in this room, I'm saying that for this particular project and also for the, for the town school admin. These are two major projects that are happening at the same time. So, you know, I'm not going to be redundant and, and speak again about it, but I think, you know, just to put it right out there, there are a lot of hours that are put on, not hours that I've spent, the, the hours that all of you've spent, and I can see the faces in the room. And even our town manager doing the same, and, and the members on the board that were volunteering to be part of it. So, regardless of how November nineteenth goes, in, in my opinion, I'd like to see both projects prevail. The commitment and the dedication and the service that all of you have provided to the town is so valuable and appreciated, and you should be very proud of what you've done for your community. All of these endeavors have a price associated with them. They're all expensive, you know, in my opinion, but they're needed, and they are going to shape our community for years to come. And these are investments in our people, in our families, in our community. And our seniors have, have deserved to have it paid forward to them. They supported, you know, generations, you know, through this community, and it is a growing population, and seniors are aging in place more than ever before. And I think that this, to me, represents so much more than just a building. It, it represents giving to some of our most precious members of our community that deserve to have a flagship destination that they can go to and be with people and be with their community. And so I'll stop at that, but I just wanted to make sure that I gave a sincere thank you before, you know, we go into the heart of the presentation. So thank you.
So we're going to head into the Town Hall School Administration Building and I'm going to yield my seat to the designer, who will be a lot slower than I was, a lot more articulate.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. So I'll walk you through kind of the history where we've been, Town Hall School Administration Building. This is a current rendering of the proposed building. And we're going to, I think there's some additional images that we can show you a little bit later on, but while we're here, parking lot at the front, you can see the buzzel kind of peeking out at the back. So the proposal is to build it into the side of the hill and basically, the parking lot you see out front is essentially the parking lot that's there right now. We've got a site plan I'm going to show you as well. So there's a three-story section right in here, town offices on the first two levels, school administration on the upper level, and then this wing right here is really where the larger meeting rooms are. So programming, we started out pretty much the same way as the seniors' center in looking at programming requirements for the building. We looked at it two ways there as well. We looked at it as a matrix, we looked at the numbers, we also looked at it diagrammatically. The program is really driven by what's going into the space. Each of the different departments, we looked at, we came into each of the buildings that where the departments are. The town offices, for the most part, are in this building right here. School administration's in four different buildings around town. We went to see their offices and see how they do their work. We wanted to talk to them about what the future growth was going to be and what they foresee because we want to make sure that we're designing a building that doesn't just work for you today and solve the space problems that you have today, but plan for your future as well. So the program for each of those departments is driven by the people that are going in there, the equipment and the furnishings that they use, and that's really what drives the program. And then we put that all onto a programmatic diagram like these and they're all color-coded and all the furniture is shown in there, all the equipment is shown in there so we can get a kind of a visual whether or not everything fits in there. And then they work together and kind of go back and forth in order to come up with the programmatic requirements. And then we compare that to similar communities. From those programmatic diagrams, we worked through a variety of different schemes on where to site the building on this particular site and then how to set it up. We looked at two-story buildings, we looked at three-story buildings, we looked at a variety of different things at the front of the site and at the back, and we settled on this plan. Basically, what you're looking at there is, in these images, the larger image in the center is the first floor, the ground floor plan, and then if you look over to the right-hand side, there's the upper two floors there. The white sections, for the most part, are things like stairs, elevators, toilets and storage spaces. And then the office spaces are, for the most part, up against the windows at the front and the back. Large meeting area that I pointed out in the rendering is over on the left, kind of shown in a purple-blue. That purple-blue area, that whole suite of rooms, is designed to work after hours. So you can get into the building at night, utilize this large meeting room, this selectmen's hearing room, this community space. You can get into the toilets and then the doors close down right here, which blocks off access to the stairs and the elevator and the rest of the building can be secured.
Good bless.
Good bless. So here's kind of a bird's eye view of the plan. Just to orient folks, good bless. We've got the commons sitting right here in the center. The buzzel sits up on the hill with the parking lot in the back. There's the proposed new Town Hall School Administration Building, School Street. This is the high school and there's where a portion of the school administration is right now in the Roman House. So it just gives you an idea about the kind of overall scale of the building. A little bit bigger than the buzzel in terms of the amount of footprint it takes up, but substantially smaller, obviously, than your high school. The parking lot pretty much lays out over your existing parking lot. We've looked at regrading this a little bit, changing the entrances and exits a little bit, actually doesn't change very much, and maintaining the Swain Green pretty much the way it is. So there's kind of a close-up of the parking plan, the buzzel pretty much sits there, three-story section here, the one-story section built into the hill. So what actually happens is you walk in down at the lower level, directly off the parking lot, completely accessible. And then if you take the stairs to the elevator up one floor, you're at the second floor of the town offices and you can walk directly out to the rear parking lot. So we've set this up so that there's coming in on the first floor in the front, coming in directly on the second floor at the back. But what that means is we've got windows all the way around from the second story up. Down below on the first floor, this back end of the building right here is below grade therefore, and that's why we have all that storage space along the back of the building there, because we don't need windows for storage. The parking lot lays out pretty much right here. One of the things that I will point out is, we try to be very careful in laying out the parking lot so that we have some trees and so forth that kind of break down the overall scale of the parking lot, so there isn't just a big sea of pavement there. But we left this section of the parking lot in the front here without trees. And the idea here is, we're trying to make sure that we have a wide-open space so that you can do your carnivals and your Fourth of July celebration there and some other things like that. So we have an open space here of just over an acre in the front, without any trees or anything like that, so you could set up something like that. And we've done some test fits to make sure that all still fits. There's your Fourth of July building there, we're basically keeping that the way it is. We've got some handicap parking right here at the front, the front door. We've also got some handicap parking here, close to the green, and a couple of spaces as well over at the Fourth of July building is what we're looking at right now.
I guess I'm back. So this committee also has met 27 times, produced videos regarding the deficiencies in the building, and we've hosted an informational one in July. Outreach newsletters, again, water bill inserts, two of them, with a third one going out shortly. And a community information session on November 2nd at 6:00 PM inside this building. The next steps is the information session, appropriation of town meetings and similar design development, construction documents, receive the construction bids, building the new building and moving the school administration, the town hall to the new building. The cost of this project is thirty-seven million eight hundred and thirty-five thousand seven sixty-six total. We've already appropriated nine hundred and fifty-five thousand for the study portion of it, which is part of the project. The requested town meeting is for thirty-six million eight hundred and eighty thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Thank you.
I would like to note that on both committees, we spent less than 50% of the appropriated amounts to date. So, I mean, we tried really hard to watch every dollar, even in the study phase, and we will continue to do so in the next phases also.
Thank you. So I know the next slide has questions, a couple of comments, and I'm asking them more for the public benefit as well. I do see that in terms of the estimates, I can see them closer than what people can see at home. Obviously, with inflation and rising costs, can you speak to the construction contingencies and some of the built-in mechanics to cover us for that so that, you know, we can feel with some degree of confidence that the numbers that we're seeing are the numbers that we're going to have? I know you don't have a crystal ball, but just to help instill some of that confidence. And then regarding the Town Hall School Admin, if you can talk just a little bit about the surety that any sort of water issues, you know, with the building are being addressed as part of your plan? Because the Swain School, for example, had a history of water issues.
I'm going to let the designer talk to you about the water issues, but I know that we have built-in mitigations in the estimate for them.
Okay.
And that this building is actually higher than the Swain School. The Swain School had a level below the level that you see the parking lot at.
Okay.
So with regard to the Crystal Mall, we are following a process that involves professional standards on estimating. And in this particular estimate, we have a design contingency, we have a construction contingency and we have an escalation factor. All three of those factors are there because of the period that we are in. They're all higher than they would have been two years ago. Two years ago, we would be looking at, you know, a 4% escalation. We're now looking at 8% escalation. The design contingency, we would have been comfortable at 10%. We're at 12 and a half percent. Construction contingencies, we'd be happy at 5% and we're at 7 and a half percent. So we do have inherent built-in safeguards on both projects and that's a great question. But as we move forward, at the end of design development, we're doing another estimate. And halfway through construction documents, we're doing another estimate. So at each point, should the numbers start to turn unfavorable, we'll do some more work on trying to be even more efficient than we have been with the layout of the building so far. All projects have room to constrict a little bit. You know, some people call that value engineering. We will practice that should our estimates travel off the pathway. We don't expect that they will, they're healthy estimates, but we will be prepared to do so should they.
Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Like, good. Also, Dan and I, we communicate and he's aware of other bids that come in. So he sees other projects where those estimates are coming in, what percentages. So looking at these and some of the things we discussed, we're pretty comfortable with these prices and these estimates that have come through.
Okay. I also just want to say also, for the benefit of the public, we obviously see social media sites and some people are out there even indicating they're somewhat surprised what's going on, they're just hearing about it almost for the first time, if you can believe that. So I just want to remind people that this was a town meeting vote that was previously taken for these committees to be formed, for these companies to be essentially hired to carry prior town meeting votes, which were the will of the people at that time, to have these projects worked up to this point, to be brought back with plans and real cost estimates for the collective we, for 01887, for the town of Wilmington to vote on. So, you know, the Board of Selectmen is a primary body that's very instrumental in this whole town meeting process through all the good work of all of you fine people. I think that all just kind of bears repeating. So we're going to obviously take it to the board to ask questions and certainly anybody in the public, I'm going to let people speak. But I think it's important that people do come to town meeting, you know, on the 19th and let your voice be heard. There will be presentations as part of that to the public and I think people need to understand that these needs won't go away. So, you know, the dollar we spend tomorrow may be more important than the dollar we spend in the future because the cost is only really going to go up. And the result of doing nothing in either one of these regards does not result in a no spend for the town of Wilmington because the existing structures that we have are going to need capital improvements now and in the future. So having said that, I'd like to turn it over to the board if you have any questions or comments that you might want to ask, and then I'll turn it out to the audience.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you again for the presentations. Great. So great to see it all come to kind of fruition. Kind of going off of what the chair just mentioned, that's what I wanted to say, that if, you know, going off of some social media, you know, things, you know, there's a lot of, I'll say negativity, for lack of a better term, around the school administration and Town Hall meeting, Town Hall building. I do want to just say, you know, if that does not pass, it does not mean it's not going to cost us money because the buildings will have to be renovated. And I don't know, Madam Chair, through you to the town manager, I don't know, Jeff, if you, I've not asked you to pull out a number or anything like that, but maybe you can give, you know, the viewers and the people here in the room an idea of if that were not to pass, you know, what would need to be done in Town Hall alone, just to bring it up to code? Because I believe if we start fixing certain things, we have to continue to fix a lot of things. And we're looking at a lot of money to upgrade a very old building when those funds, to Madam Chair's point, could be used to a new building.
Well, so there's a couple of challenges. Certainly, with respect to the Town Hall, we have a heating system that needs to be addressed. The heating system, George and his folks have been able to maintain and keep going, but that would have to be replaced. The windows, you know, we talked about energy here a short time ago and electricity. These windows are single-pane windows, original to the building, there is no heat value to them, so those would have to be replaced at some point. We have a section of the roof, George has spoken to me, I think it was initially two years ago, excuse me, about the need to replace that roof. We've deferred, not wanting to put money into the building, given that we knew we were in this process. I can't offer you specific prices at this point. The Roman House, you know, is in as much, if not greater distress, other than the Town Hall is. It has issues in terms of access. Anybody that's been over there, obviously you realize you, if you have mobility issues, you have challenges getting into the building. They also have similar issues with windows. The roof was done not too long ago, much to the consternation of many in town as to why we were putting money on a roof. But the fact of the matter was, it was leaking to the point that it was, you know, a serious situation. But also the fact that, from a staffing standpoint, as was noted earlier, the superintendent's office has personnel that are occupying the former Town Hall, which was later repurposed as the Arts Center, and then a couple of schools. So it just makes it more challenging to have, conduct the work of the superintendent's office when you're dispersed in that manner. And so the Roman House is going to have to be addressed in some manner. I quite honestly think that there are very limited options for dealing with the Roman House. You're not going to make it handicapped, accessible. It's really, I don't see how you can put elevators in there. Of course, the other issue we've talked about on the committee for both of these projects, whether it's the seniors' center or the Town Hall School Admin, is that there are certain code requirements. We're operating under a grandfather arrangement because this building was constructed in 1958, I believe it was. The Roman House was 1900. The seniors' center was 1935. So the codes in those days aren't what the codes are today, to the extent that we start putting money into these buildings. And I'm not going to try to profess to know the particular trigger points, but when you hit certain levels of investment in the buildings as upgrades, then it triggers requirements that you fully comply or to a greater degree comply, whether it's with ADA or fire safety, sprinkler systems and so on. So all those things, you know, will impose additional costs to essentially have still a subpar building. So those are some of the things that, you know, I think we're up against.
Yeah. Thank you. So my point with that, obviously, is that, you know, I feel like, you know, the town administration, I'm sorry, yeah, town administration, school administration, these are people who go to work every day, just like the rest of us, nine to five, and they deserve to be in places that are nice and have, you know, facilities that are working and heat and things like that. You know, politics, you know, are politics. I think people want to punish people, you know, certain people. Boards, we're a volunteer board here. We don't have offices in these buildings. You know, it's the people who work nine to five, the Beverly's and obviously Mr. Hell's here, but there are administrative offices in both places and they're doing the town's work, they're doing the school's work. And I do implore you to really think about, you know, the, you know, not passing this because it's going to cost us money and we're going to be putting money into old buildings. It's a Band-Aid. So I just think we need to be smart about how we spend the money. I understand it's a lot of money, but I would ask that you do come out to the special town meeting on the 19th and approve both of these. You know, let's take care of the people who work in this town and make it what it is and for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything to my left?
I'm not supporting Town Hall.
And let me explain why. We've got schools in disarray. Yes, we're applying for assistance through mass schools, but they're also talking about now, with the Wildwood School...
I understand it's a lot of money, but I would ask that you do come out to the special town meeting on the nineteenth and approve both of these. Um, you know, let's take care of the people who work in this town and make it what it is and, and for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything to my left?
I'm not supporting town hall. And let me explain why. We got schools in disarray. Yes, we're, we're applying for assistance through mass schools. But they're also talking about now with the Wildwood School, to drop five million dollars into it, to give it another five, five to six year, uh, seven year life. We need a substation. These are, one, for the future, our children. Our children should be in good schools. They should be, uh, capable of having a class with their, with their, either their friend or their, uh, brother or sister. I feel that what we, the town should do is support the senior center and turn down town hall until we get our schools squared away and until we get a substation built, uh, in the Ballard Vale area of, of town. These are like, the fire station, that's, that's life. That's a li- you're threatening people's lives by not having them, uh, capable of, uh, getting up there in a, um, uh, rapid time. Do we need a town hall? Oh God, do we need it. It's embarrassing in here, but we have to look at our priorities right now. And I would rather sacrifice the town hall for schools. I would rather sacrifice the town hall for a substation. That's my view. And, uh, I wish both projects good luck. But, uh, again, like I said, the senior center should be, should have been done years ago. It wasn't, it's being done now. But as far as the town hall is concerned, I believe we should wait on it. Thank you.
Just as a point of clarification, and this is not to be viewed as going against what you're saying, uh, Selectman DePauw, but just as a point of clarification, there was discussion about five million for the Wildwood, but that is not beneficially decided. Is that correct?
Correct.
Jeff, that's correct.
Yes, correct, yes.
And then furthermore regarding the fire substation, we do not have a piece of land at this point that that can be built on. Is that true or false?
That's true.
Okay.
Can I respond to this?
Yes.
We don't. Maybe we should start looking. Maybe we should start looking harder. These are necessities. I do, I feel for, for the town hall, for the people that work here. Every time I walk in here. But the trouble is, since nineteen sixty-two, we've been talking about a substation. Nineteen sixty-two. And here it is. We're nowhere near, nowhere closer to it. Let's, let's, let's get our priorities squared away. Let's get the senior center done and then let's, let's look at a town hall later on when we get our schools and our substation. Uh, as far as the five million dollars I brought up, that is something that they're speculating on right now, uh, for the Wildwood. I mean, the Wildwood, my grandson went to, to the Wildwood, uh, twelve year, twelve years ago. And it was bad. And here we are still sitting in it? I just don't agree with it. Uh, whatever way it goes, I will support. Uh, I am not supporting the town hall, I'm supporting the senior center. But if they both go through, then let's get them done and let's get them done quick. Thank you.
Thank you. To my right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Nope, my pleasure, thank you. To my right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gentlemen, uh, thank you again, uh, for this presentation and, and I want to also, uh, compliment the members of the town hall committee. A lot of work went into this and, and thanks to our friends at WCTV, I was able to tune in and watch most of them, mostly to, uh, keep a close eye on Dan, but, uh, I really appreciate all your efforts. Madam Chair, if I could just address some of the comments that were just made.
Yes.
I just, I, you know, I didn't plan on mentioning this, but I will because I, I certainly don't need any credit, but the person who accompanied me, uh, you know, recently on one of my, our days off, uh, a department head and myself drove around in the northern part of town door to door, uh, seeing if they would be willing to sell to the town or, uh, talk to the town. I wasn't gonna speak for the town, but wanted to kind of put forth my own ver- effort, put my own boots on the ground. And I only mention that because the person I was with deserves credit. Uh, and so, uh, to the point that was made a few minutes ago, this person who's a department head deserves a lot of credit because they are actively seeking, uh, a, a fire substation in northern town. And it's not something we can advertise when we negotiate a private property, we don't go around telling the town. If we were to approach you about your property, we wouldn't broadcast it to the community. And so I do want to, uh, push back a little bit with all due respect to the fact that I don't, that members of this community are actively looking for a substation and have been. And I would imagine we will continue to do so until we have a location because I do believe there's unanimous, uh, support for it. And I look forward to the day that it's open. And I don't live on the northern side of town, just for, just for a point of clarification, I just think it's that damn important, excuse my language. Uh, but getting back to the matter at hand, I do appreciate, uh, your efforts and I look forward to people casting their votes on November nineteenth. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anything further?
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh, I served on the, uh, town hall, school administration, uh, project and I want to, um, thank all of the committee members and, um, Johnson Roberts, P three, George in particular, uh, for the professionalism in the hard work that they put over those, what was it, eighteen months, uh, of work. And, you know, you say twenty-seven meetings, but we get packets upon packets and emails upon emails and it's not just twenty-seven meetings. And a, a lot of time and effort and work went into this, as did the senior center. And you had a group of residents of this town that care for the town and they, they were well aware when putting this together of every single dollar, um, that would be spent on this needed building. You know, you, you, the, the employees of this town, of, of the schools, um, do yeoman's work and, and they need a, an appropriate place to continue to do the work for the citizens and the children, uh, of this town. And, you know, there is no sacrifice. The, the sacrifice is making sure that this town runs in the manner that it should run. Do we need a new school? Of course we do. That's why we're going through the MSBA project that's gonna take about five to seven years. We understand that. Do we need to address the issues at the Wildwood? Absolutely. And do we need to address a substation? Of course we do. Uh, we're not, uh, you know, we're aware of all of these issues and, and we're aware of every dollar that needs to be spent on them. You know, these two projects are not going to affect the taxpayer, believe it or not. It's coming out of the regular budget. Uh, so there's not an override on these two projects. So that's important to understand. So I, I hope that you all come out and see the, how, the necessity of, of both the senior center and the town hall school administration building. Uh, that Roman House is not going to stand for another, uh, I say five years, but I probably would say three years. Uh, and, and you have, uh, people spread out everywhere. You know, you, you do a great job in, in, in putting it all together, for sure. Uh, but it certainly would be, uh, more ideal for the students of this town if you were in one, one location proper, uh, to support the parents of the town as well. So I hope they understand that and I hope they all come out and vote for a new town hall and school administration building. Thank you.
Question if I may, thank you very much. Just a, uh, clarification or a question to you gentlemen about the process. Later on in the agenda, we'll be, uh, asked to consider, uh, the warrant. And the warrant would, uh, some of the options, um, include a, a committee report. And so my question to you would be this, would this be something that would be similar to it? And you don't have to answer because you maybe don't have the answer yet, but would this be something we can anticipate as the committee report? I mean, is this something that residents could expect?
Depending on how you vote on it, yes, it's gonna be something like this. Um, a, a combination of the two combined or separately. As come through, there'll be some additional information that'll also be provided. There are things that we have in place that we have not shown yet. You know, there'll be some before and after pictures, so the, but, uh, yes, to your point.
Thank you. Yeah, obviously, because, you know, we, we, we're kind of in tune with this, but I'm trying to think about the average person who's just working and raising their family, hasn't had an opportunity to watch all these meetings. And so, you know, I think the more information that we can provide for them, the better, they're better informed, the decision they'll be able to make.
Yep, just want to turn it over to the manager as well.
Uh, just a couple of, uh, comments that I'd like to make in terms of the, the general, um, perspective that at least seems to be reflected amongst some in the community. And I see this via the social media, um, posts. Um, the, the, the suggestion that the town administration, uh, you know, worked for an extended period of time remotely and that it really wouldn't be a problem, uh, having the town, uh, simply do that going forward and perhaps for the perspective of having the Wildwood, uh, students come to the town hall. First of all, I just want to, for the record, um, confirm that, you know, that there was a very short stretch of time when the pandemic first broke. Uh, the governor had issued an order, uh, indicating that on non, and I forget exactly how it was phrased, but essentially non-emergency, um, personnel, uh, the, the request was that they, to the extent possible, will, uh, work remotely. And I believe that was from the end of March into early April. And so there was a period of time, a very short period of time, where much of the staff did work remotely, but, but it became quickly apparent that you can't process payroll, for example. You can't pay vendors off of somebody's laptop at their home. You need to have people in the office, uh, doing that work. Uh, that there are still people, uh, that, for, for better or worse, that want to, um, they're not, uh, they're comfortable paying their property tax or their water bill online and they don't want to necessarily put it in the mails, or they maybe have questions. So they want to come into a physical space, in this case, the treasure collector's office, and have a conversation with someone. Uh, similarly in the engineering office, certainly we have a lot of information online in terms of plans and GIS. But in many instances, whether it's a property owner or developer that has questions about their property, they want to be able to come in to the engineering office and have the plans rolled out before them and see that information physically. Even things as uplifting as the recreation department, they do a lot of their, uh, programming online, but there are still instances where, uh, parents looking to sign their kids up for programs or adults looking to do trips, they want to come in and have conversations with people. So there is a, an importance and a value to having a physical presence. And I, I think the, the same can be said for, uh, the, the superintendent's office that we, we just can't pack up and, you know, operate out of our homes. You can't go to the building inspector's home to get a building permit. Certainly some of those things can be done online, but, um, there's a need to have that physical, uh, presence, a place to go to transact business. One of the other things that's been talked about that I find disconcerting is the premise that the town has, um, not engaged in due diligence with respect to its, um, uh, its buildings, that we've essentially just been asleep at the switch and allowed our buildings to deteriorate. Uh, certainly there's, you know, George Hooper and his staff has done a tremendous amount to maintain the buildings. But beyond that, on a regular basis at every town meeting, uh, there have been requests for capital improvements, whether it's replacing all the windows at the North Intermediate School, changing out all the windows at the Shawshine Elementary School, replacing roofs, replacing boilers. Uh, you know, the town spent millions of dollars, uh, in two thousand on a new middle school, uh, spent ninety-plus million dollars on a new high school. That makes up the largest share of our debt currently is the paying off of the high school. So the town has demonstrated a, uh, a, a desire and intent to invest, uh, in buildings and in particular in school buildings, has been a tremendous amount of capital. And two buildings in the last, uh, fifteen years between two thousand and two thousand and fifteen, uh, in terms of those two schools, the largest schools, uh, that we have in the system, uh, we put together a facilities master plan that was, uh, commissioned or started in two thousand fifteen, sixteen. It was ultimately, the plan was issued in two thousand eighteen. It identified, uh, well over a hundred million dollars worth of improvements that the town needed to make in, in buildings. It focused on both general government buildings, whether it was a, uh, fire, um, uh, fire substation, the, um, uh, the public buildings offices, the Harndon Tavern, you name it, all those buildings were covered. It also focused on, on the schools and the fir- and at that time, uh, the late, um, uh, Superintendent Benton had first talked about the prospect of the need to consolidate, uh, the schools. That we have a number of smaller schools and that there was value in looking at the concept of consolidating grades. And so ultimately, when that plan was developed, it had a layout of when buildings should be, uh, addressed. It looked at the prospect of consolidation. Any plan like that, so-called master plan, uh, inevitably things come up, uh, either in terms of impediments or changes in circumstances, finances or otherwise. And, and we're not, uh, I don't think any master plan, you're ever gonna be able to fully execute it exactly as it, uh, as it came about. Um, but we're attempting to execute it to the extent we can. And two of the first projects that it talked about were, uh, dealing with our senior center and dealing with our town hall school administration building, uh, not to mention, uh, dealing with the Wildwood School, which as others have mentioned, is a work in progress. Uh, and we're looking to deal with not only, uh, on the long term, but only, but also in the short term. So there are a number of projects in the works. The, the other reality is that we have to be mindful of the ability to pay. And so, you know, we, one of the things that, uh, both my predecessor and I have been very judicious about is building reserves. And certainly there's been pluses and minuses to that. I think there's, you know, a lot of people that have been concerned about the prospect of why are we setting so much money aside? Well, the fact of the matter is, if these projects are approved, uh, we're talking about, uh, looking, using a significant amount of those funds to, uh, buy down or pay down the cost of the borrowing that will have to be done. And as was noted earlier, we're not looking for a, uh, a proposition two and a half override. We're not looking for a debt exclusion that would add costs to, um, to the property taxpayers bill. We're looking to do it within the operating budget. So I think all those things need to be, uh, considered, uh, when folks are looking at these options. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I would just add to that too is, um, some of the work that's been done on the ADA compliance as well. And then we've done significant technology enhancements across the system as well, whether it's, um, the town side or the school side. So, thank you for that additional information. I think, you know, in summary, you know, the presentation's been great, the numbers have been out there, the board members have had an opportunity. Um, as the Chair, I have a little bit more latitude, um, to use my discretion. We have public comments that comes at the end, we still have a lot of other town business. I'm going to deviate from that because you're all in the room. There are people that are sitting in the audience that we already started an hour later than we should have. So I really want to be respectful, um, of everyone that's here tonight. So I am gonna open it up to the audience to have anybody that would like to make a comment and or ask a question. What I would just kindly state is that, um, this is a public meeting, it's not a public hearing. Um, we do have town meeting, you do have the opportunity to ask questions and facilitate debate during that time. Um, this is more an information gathering session, you, you can feel free to speak freely. Um, but the goal is just to kind of get the information out there and have, uh, people ask questions and make comments as you deem appropriate. And if you can just please be mindful of the time that you're utilizing and, and keep your comments as succinct as possible.
Madam Chair, before you go to comment, I might add, first of all, thank you very much for the kind words. Um, the liaison, Selectman Kyra, Selectman Bendo, Selectman Vassali, also sit on these boards and the appreciation from the rest of the committees that go here. Uh, there's a lot of due diligence here. I mean, we've been charged and tasked with both of these projects. I know there's a lot of conversation going on out there, good or bad, at least, at least it's conversation. I know there's a lot of conversation going on out there, good or bad, at least, at least it's conversation. People are talking, you know, he said, so somebody may not have heard about it. Uh, yeah, it's getting out there. People are talking, so either bad publicity is pubi-, you know, it's, it's out there. So, it's, I, I think people realize, you know, when, uh, and we've talked about the, the Roman House being a residential home originally. And, and then, the, the Arts Council used to be our town hall, and we repurposed these buildings in eighty-six and, and eighty-four, when we, we had everybody move in. But back then, to repurpose and remodel a building was a lot different than it is today. So, we have the opportunity. We, we didn't have a new senior center. We, we had a repurposed one, which is a school building. We didn't have a new town hall. We had a repurposed one, which is the, the Glen Road. So, we, we made it work. Now, we have the opportunity. Wilmington's been fiscally responsible for all these years, and we find ourselves in a good situation. I know times are tough, but we have the opportunity to do this correctly. So, I, I would encourage people to get out on the, the eighteenth, go to the, the, the meeting, the public hearing meeting, and get some more information before they, they go out there and do it. So, but I appreciate my committee's effort and everything we've put together on this.
Thank you for that. When you say the eighteenth, you meant October eighteenth for the public hearing to get more information?
Correct, correct.
And the special town meeting is November nineteenth, so.
Okay, continue to get more information out there, uh, like, uh, the, Dan had stated, uh, November second. We're going to have one at the senior center during the day, and then one here that night.
Wonderful, thank you. So, would anyone like to rise and speak in your place? If you'd like to come up to the microphone, actually, it would be preferred, if you can give your name and address for the record, that would be appreciated.
Hello, thank you for the opportunity to give a public comment tonight. Uh, my name's Michael Mercaldi, and I live at Five Crystal Road. I participate in the group Parent and Guardian Advocates for Wilmington Schools, also known as PAWS. We have over four hundred members to date and are growing. The goal of our group is to engage parents in district-wide issues and continue to improve Wilmington's schools through positive change. I would like to take this time to comment on the direction of the Wildwood School renovation and MSBA projects. Finding a solution to the Wildwood School problem is very pressing and of significant concern to parents and guardians in town, not only because of the acute need to find a solution to the problem, but also for what potential solution could represent to the community at large. We see the following challenges with the current proposals. All proposals have significant construction costs, which will also take time. If any construction project is recommended by this board, it will most likely need to be approved in the town meeting in April. After those funds are approved, considerable time will then need to be, um, several time will then need to be completed, the project. We believe this approach could solve the problem by the 2024, 25 school year at the earliest and may run over this period. This means that students and staff in this situation will be in it for at least one more school year, if not longer, due to unforeseen construction delays. Parents and guardians can make this current situation work for the short term, but a two-to-three-year timeframe may be too much for them to handle. The proposal to renovate the Wildwood School may encounter unexpected challenges. The initial project price quote is lower compared to other options, but unanticipated costs could occur once the project is underway due to the renovation nature of the project. The adage, "Once you open up the walls, there's no going back," may ring true. This potential issue, coupled with adding money into a school that may be replaced by the MSBA relatively soon, may not be the best use of funds. Furthermore, recommending this option may elicit a strong response from the community due to the significant concerns about the state of the school and the optics of sending students back to a school that was deemed unfit for use by local officials. It also does not safeguard us from future disruptions and unforeseen facility failures at the Wildwood. To solve this problem, we would like to advocate that the town and school administration set out and execute a bold vision that addresses the short-term Wildwood need, but also ties in the future MSBA project. We would like to propose the following for consideration. Include parent and guardian perspectives in the process. Our discussions with parents and guardians have yielded a strong desire for improved infrastructure investment in the early education and elementary schools. They would like the Wildwood conversation to be expanded to understand the longer-term strategy for investment in our elementary schools as to avoid the type of emergency spending that we now find necessary in the failing Wildwood facility. Identify factors to guide decision-making beyond cost. Cost is important, and we applaud, uh, the town and this board for being excellent stewards of the town's finances. For here, we would like to ask this board to consider viewing costs as more of a down payment or investment into the future success of the school district. With this crisis comes an outstanding opportunity for the board to set out a bold path that not only solves the short-term Wildwood issue, but could also improve learning outcomes, staff and student safety, alignment with longer-term facilities plan, staff retention, and impacts of special education service delivery. And then, finally, move towards district unification through the MSBA project. With this project, we would like to advocate that the board think strategically. Instead of replacing Wildwood with another early education center, we'd like to propose that the town create an early education and elementary campus that brings all the early education and elementary school facilities up to the modern quality of the middle and high school buildings. This campus approach can have significant benefits. It can allow the students in town to go to school together before middle school, align education and administrative, administration across the district, reduce school transitions, and decrease the number of buildings that need to be maintained by the town, which may reduce overall spending costs. This vision that we've staked out tonight is a set of ideas. We would love to hear the select board's ideas and identify means where we can work proactively with you and the school district to help make this vision a reality. Thank you again for your time tonight.
Thank you. So, I, I appreciate your time. You can certainly be seated. Um, I gave it some latitude. I know we're talking specifically about the projects. He was very well poised to give that, um, so I didn't want to, um, turn him off, um, but there was some mention to the Wildwood, there was some mention about dollars, so I gave it some latitude to have that. The next two memorandums after this discussion will pertain to the Wildwood, so I appreciate, um, that latitude. So, obviously, um, is there anyone else that has any questions or comments specific to, and if you can hold, if it's relative to the Wildwood, if I can just ask you to pause on any Wildwood comments, but specifically for the senior center or the town, uh, school admin building? Would anyone wish to speak regarding that?
I'm not sure if I should speak now, because I think it's all tied together, so.
It is. So, the next two memos that we have here are regarding, um, the Wildwood. So, if you have something pertaining to that, I can recognize you at that particular time, if that's okay? We just want to stick specifically to the senior center and to the town school admin building, and then, you'll be able to speak regarding the Wildwood.
Okay, well, maybe I'll speak on the, on the other two projects.
Sure, if you can just give your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Barb Bowden, and I, and I live at One Leonard Lane in Wilmington.
Sure.
Um, and, and I think what I'm struggling with is the need, and I think we all recognize that need is everywhere right now, right? We need a sen-, a senior center, we need a town hall, and good lord, do we need schools, right? We have, like, massive investment in front of us, and I hear that there has been some investment in the past, but what I'm concerned about is sort of how we engage planning elements around this. So, we've developed a plan, right, in 2017, but it just feels like, you know, we, we sort of haven't been able to activate on that, and we understand that there's been challenges on that, but what, we seem to take these things as individual decisions without the context of how investment right now in these two projects, how does that affect our ability to do other projects in the future? And I think there needs to be sort of a little bit more longer-term vision and planning and conversation around how we do this. I just sat through a presentation of the RMLD person who had fifty years mapped on that, right? He talked about, um, how we are sort of investing now, but how trends are going to change, and how we have to invest in the future, and how we have to think strategically and out of the box, and how we have to come up with contingency plans if things fail. We know there's a failed building already, and right now, we're, we're talking after this moment about costs that we now have to pay for because we didn't plan five years ago. And I, and so, the question isn't sort of about this need, or that need, or, or another need. The question is really about what's the next need? How are we thinking about the next ten needs? And which one of those is going to fail and cost more in the short term because we have to figure something out? Because the heating system's going to go in this building, right? It al-, it's already gone in the Wildwood. So, I, I think this is where we would love to sort of have more conversation. How do we get, like, you know, and I know these teams have been wonderful in terms of their planning and getting people engaged across, right? You need the finance committee, you need the select board, you need, you know, obviously, facilities expertise. You need parents, you need active people in town that have expertise in this type of strategic planning, because it's not one project or two projects, it's, it's the next fifty years of projects. And I'd love to, um, see how we might engage in that conversation about how we make a plan, a reality, on timeline, on building, you know, building materials, on facilities planning, on, you know, town planning, on strategizing around town meeting votes, on financing. So, that would be my question, I guess, to the board, is, is how do we think about bringing those pieces together so that we're not always being so reactive around some of the problems and challenges that we're facing?
So, Jeff, and, and, um, and to Mr. Hooper, I mean, can you talk a little bit about some of that strategic planning that you talked about and how it, it's a part of a much bigger plan? The strategic plan for the community, as well as the facilities master plan, they go multi-years out.
Right, um, and, uh, with the, uh, with the town manager, we do at least a five-year capital plan on our projects that are coming up, what we're working with. Uh, and then, to your point, our facility master plan, uh, we had, uh, as the manager, I said, identified every building, where it needs to go. Uh, again, the Wildwood School was identified that it was not going to be part of our future plan. It was supposed to be replaced, and that's where we are now. We go back and forth over all this and trying to get these things to, uh, to move down the line. The buttwell and the, uh, Wildwood School, there was no future plans for it because it was supposed to be removed, and we were supposed to have additions, uh, working on, uh, new buildings. The MSBA's part of it, doesn't move as quick as some would like, obviously. We can't do it as quick as we would build this new senior center. Once this gets done, we're talking, what, eighteen months to build a senior center? When you're talking with the MSBA, it's five to seven years. So, there's a lot, a lot involved, but there is a facility master plan in place, and that's what we've done. And, uh, we had a committee that goes through it, and we look through it. Uh, and, uh, I use the manager's terms all the time, analysis paralysis. We, we look at things over and over and over again, and then, we, if we don't act on them, then we end up here. It's the cost of doing nothing, that, that's what it is, so. But we do have a, a plan in place.
I, I, just to tag on to what George said, I mean, that master plan, facilities plan, took us through, I believe it was 2034, 2035.
Right.
Plan was issued in January of eighteen, so we were certainly taking a, a multi-decade look, recognizing that, um, given the, uh, what do we have, eight hundred thousand square feet of space in the various buildings, maybe more than that now, but sizable footprint of buildings throughout the town, and again, recognizing, um, we have to be mindful of people's ability to pay. You know, we have to segment that so we don't have, uh, an overwhelming number of projects on the docket next year, so to speak. One of the things that, you know, none of us could have anticipated when we did that facilities plan was the circumstance that took place in, uh, it was February, when we had the oil delivery issue that clearly was, uh, negligence, in my estimation, on the part of the, um, uh, delivery, uh, folks that put the, um, Wildwood in a place where we couldn't no longer have students and staff. I, I think, uh, you know, somebody ear- earlier commented about town officials declaring the Wildwood unsafe. I don't think that there was any declaration that the building was unsafe. In fact, prior to, um, prior to this event, and, and this may have been even, um, a couple of years ago, there were a number of issues raised by, um, people that were concerned about the building. The health director, uh, went in there, uh, as well as the building inspector, and there's no question that the building is tired, but they, at that time, indicated that the building was, uh, safe for occupation. Again, it was not the prettiest building, it wasn't an attractive building. Uh, the, the issue that capped things was when the, uh, oil tank breach took place. It just was not feasible to have the remediation work going on in that place at the same time as we had staff and students there, and, and I think that was a prudent decision on the, uh, school superintendent's part to, um, decide to vacate the building. So, um, you know, I, I respectfully disagree with the idea that we aren't planning for the future. You know, the facilities plan was an attempt to do that, recognizing that, um, there are limited dollars and unlimited demands.
And, and just to add to that, it, it is online, so that the residents can go and look at it. It's very in-depth, and it's worth the read if, if you have the opportunity to do that. And I think, George, you did testing, air quality testing at the Wildwood, you did, you know, to, to.
We were, we're aware of everything that's in the building, and we went through it, and like the manager said, until that, uh, delivery day. And then, we knew we couldn't, we had to remediate that. Uh, the DEP was right on site, and, uh, we acted as quickly as possible, and it has been remediated, it's been cleaned up, so. Uh, but trying to put people back in after dealing with that, it.
And, and many of the individuals who were here, I see, you know, the audience were part of that facilities master plan. A great deal of time, I think, was, was with the Cecil Group and, um.
He's Cecil, I know.
Yeah, and, and they, they really went out, and they, they put everything in, in succinct, you know, order, and, you know.
I think I also, I know you were standing patiently waiting to speak, but I think it also, you know, um, needs to be stated that all these meetings are public, but there are so many of them to attend. So, if you were going to go to a, a finance committee meeting, or go to a school committee meeting, or go to, um, all the meetings that you're a part of, they're all publicly posted. I think it's important, I know that people have, um, certain snapshots in time, or, you know, maybe when they move into the community, or they get more interested in, in being more involved in the community. There are several meetings that take place where all of these things are going on. They're on WCTV, they're taped, um, you can go back and revisit them. These documents reside here at town hall to know all the vast planning that actually does go into, uh, play. And, and resident and parent input is welcome at those meetings so that, you know, three or four or five years doesn't go by, um, and you, you didn't have an opportunity to express yourself during any one given meeting. So, I just want to, um, encourage people to go on the school website and go on the town website and actually come into various meetings and give public comments so that your voice is, is heard early and often regarding any project or initiative that's going on. So, we'd, feel free to come forward.
Jennifer Benelli, seventeen, Jacob Street. Um, so, in regards to the two projects today, I do, I've watched an embarrassing amount of those meetings. Um, I know how much work has gone into them and the thoughtfulness behind them. I would like to see them, definitely the senior center pass, some verdicts still out on the town admin in my own head. And a key component of that, and I think it's going to be something on a lot of parents' minds, is after this vote goes through, and we, the town needs to invest a hundred million dollars to, um, support and update its, properly update its schools to modern standards on the north side of town. And then, a few years later, another hundred million dollars to do this, uh, elementary schools on the west side of town. Will the town have sticker shock? Will they be surprised by those numbers? And that hundred million dollars, that's how much Tewksbury is spending to, for its new facility with about seven hundred and fifty students, which would be about the, the number of students at the elementary school today. MSBA is funding twenty-five to thirty-five percent of that. So, these are the numbers, and I want to feel more confident that we're not just updating a heating system, that we have a plan to bring a modern educational facilities to this town for all of our elementary students, and that we're not surprised by modular, the cost of modulars, that we're not surprised by the cost of these big capital investments, not just replacing, um, systems. So, I'll just urge the board and the members of these committees to really think through, um, what does a modern educational facility? And can we, can we make these work? And I hope you are able to answer the public at the hearing that, yes, we can make it all work. Thank you.
Good evening. She must be taller than me. Feel free to adjust it down if you'd like.
No, it's fine.
Okay.
It's okay.
Karen Porchati, twenty-six, Green Meadow. Um, I am listening to all of this, and I have been reading as we go all the information that comes out, and I am surprised that we would even consider thirty-eight million dollars to spend on administrative buildings, or anything else at this point, when we know that our students
that our students are literally in, going into containers, that's what's being proposed. How many students will we put in a container before we pause and say, there's less people in the city hall building than there are in the schools? How long do we have to, to stick these students in hallways to understand that they are not gonna learn, not like that? And our property values are tied to our school numbers, folks. That's just how it goes. If we wanna raise those values, if we want more people to come to this community, we need to recognize the value in our education. No one says that the seniors aren't worthy, no one thinks that the people that work here aren't worthy. There are worthy things, but when your basement is flooding, folks, you don't build a new addition on the house. These buildings work. Our Wildwood isn't working. We have literally jammed students into the Shaw sheen. That's not working. I mean, let's realize that we have to take a step back and assess, and as a voter, I'm not in favor of you taking those really important monies that, that you have set aside and reserved for an emergency and putting them toward that. I wanna put it towards the emergency, which is in fact, these schools. So ponder that when you are thinking about, where can we put the students? Yes, we could put them in this building, and we could put you all in containers instead, because that is a better approach.
Put them in this building.
So, I'm commenting.
I'm just responding.
And so, when my comment ends, then you respond.
Okay, thank you.
But I, I appreciate that the town has done a lot of research, and I appreciate that all of you work very, very hard. We all do too. We want our students to succeed. This approach is not gonna help us, thirty-eight million for an admin building? No.
So, I, I, thank you very much for, for your comment. I, I think it needs to be just repeated that it was the act of a prior town meeting vote that a collective body asked for this work to be done, so we're carrying out the will of the people at a prior town meeting. So, it's an obligation that we had, it was a directive through town meeting, to work both of these projects up and get it to this point, to bring it to a town meeting floor, for people to either vote in the affirmative yes, or to vote no. So, that's not to pass the buck, but that's just a statement of fact. The town meeting records prevail, and we have to carry that out, and this is the governing body to do that. So, as you've seen up here, we don't all agree on everything, and we're all gonna vote, you know, our conscience that day and do what we, what we think is right. I understand people are very impassioned, especially when you're protecting your property values, and you are correct, schools are a number-one economic driving indicator as to the value of homes. Wilmington has exploded in terms of residential growth. The fact that we have several homes that are in the one million dollar plus is, is something that I never thought I'd ever see as a five-generation family here, and Wilmington is doing exceptionally well in the real estate world. I wanna be clear that people are representing these projects because they feel that they need to bring these projects forward for the will of the people to exercise their right to vote. But I don't see as supporting one or both of these projects, that it translates into the fact that, for me personally, that I don't care about kids, or that I don't care about education, or that I'm saying that a town employee is more important than, than a student. You know, I'm a former teacher, former teacher at Wilmington Public Schools, and I don't have kids of my own, I consider all these kids my kids, quite frankly. So, I do think that, you know, we're gonna all have differences of opinion. The way municipal government works and the way finance works is that we can't work at the rate of a consumer, that if you wanna put a roof on your home, you can get three quotes, and you can put somebody on your roof in six weeks with a building permit, strip your roof off, get a new roof, and call it a day. If we wanna take action at the Wildwood, we, we, we can't do that overnight. We don't have the ability to just take the town's checkbook as a board of selectmen or a school committee, or a superintendent, or a town manager, or a public buildings superintendent, and just write out checks when we feel like it. There's a whole governmental process, and it goes at a very slow pace. And so, we're not gonna meet expectations just on the timing. We agree that all of these things need to be done. We agree that we need to invest in our schools. We agree that we need to keep up with capital improvements. We can't do everything at once. I understand that we're gonna have differences as to what should be on the priority list. We, we would do the Wildwood tomorrow, if we could, but the MSBA says five to seven years, so we have to live with those rules if we wanna get reimbursement for that. So, in the meantime, we need to keep our capital improvements in our buildings moving forward, and if we wait to do nothing on anything for five to seven years until the Wildwood gets straightened out, we're also gonna be behind strategically in doing that as well, because everything else that we need to do is going to be exponentially more expensive. So, I wanna be clear that no one on this board does not see the value in education in our students and want them to be educated in inferior hazardous conditions. So, I just wanna correct that. I also wanna say that this isn't unilaterally decided by this board, it's decided by, the school committee has, has, has a vote on this, the finance committee has a say, and the taxpayers do at town meetings. So, this is a, a bigger framework. So, just wanna make a few of those comments, and then I'll turn to my right, I believe, Selectman Carey, you had a comment.
Yeah, you hit it right on the head, Madam Chair. But I, I just, I had the impression of listening to some of the parents, that you feel that we're not doing anything. And I, I'm sure that the superintendent, the town manager, and Mr. Gereo, the superintendent of administration, can speak to the fact and, and that this process for the new Wildwood and the consolidation started well before there was an oil leak at the, at the Wildwood. You know, it's not, as if people were sitting around doing nothing. They, they started with the process, the application process. We're to the point now where we're going through the, the OPM project tonight, where we're gonna vote on that to move that forward too. So I don't want you to have the impression that nothing is being done. It's important that we address these issues, and, you know, the, the need was there, committee was set, Mr. Wendell serves on that committee, I'm an alternate to that committee, there's also people from the school committee. I'm sure that the superintendent can address your concerns too, in how this all established process with the MSBA started. Unfortunately, government moves slower than we want it to move, and that's their process. But we started our process to make sure that our kids get a, a new school. We're going to invest in, in them, in, in, in the schools. And, and, we're, we're moving right along, I think, in, in, in the program, I think.
And I think these conversations are healthy. I mean, I'll be candid, I got contacted on Friday by Michael with, with your group, the PAWS group, and he had asked for a meeting, and we had had a lengthy conversation. And I said, you know, I'd love to have a meeting with you directly, but I'm one member of the board, and I'd like you to come into the Board of Selectmen meeting on Tuesday, 'cause he wanted to speak with me on behalf of the group before tonight's meeting. And I said, rather than us do this one-on-one, why don't you come in and I'll let you speak? You know, this is not a public hearing, there is some latitude, and, and I probably will, you know, get some criticism for doing kind of a non-traditional Board of Selectmen meeting by allowing this to happen, knowing that the comments I was going to be receiving and the board was going to be receiving, but this is just in the spirit of transparency and to get the conversation going. I had had some conversations just about trying to learn more about your group and how I went about doing that, and I won't mention how that went on first pass publicly, but, you know, it was a challenge just to kinda get to a connection to your group, to even hear from you. And so, that's why, you know, you were invited in tonight, so that you could, you could have a conversation, not to give you a platform, to work against projects, and, and I'm fine to take that, that criticism by giving you the forum to do so, but that's what this governmental public process is, to hear from you, you know, and get these issues out while you have all of the people here that you would wanna get in front of, in a public setting, and, and have these questions vetted out. We definitely, you know, may not meet the expectations for everybody in this room, but there is a lot to municipal government that is, some is in our control and some is beyond our control. Some of it's legal, some of it's financial, some of it's the governmental process, and at the end of the day, we may not all agree on all the same things. But this board is committed to the community, it's committed to its children, it's committed to its seniors, it's committed to its employees. A large segment of our budget, over eighty percent, correct me if I'm wrong, is just paying the employees that work here. You know, it's a big part of it. So, there's a lot of work to be done, there's a lot of services that need to happen, and, you know, we have a lot of needs, and we have a certain amount of money, and we have to make sure that we, we cover our bases and provide the suite of services. So, you know, when we have conversations about putting an ambulance out there and educating our students, and then making sure we retain and recruit quality employees to work here, and then we have a veterans population that's ever-growing because of world affairs, it's how do we balance all of those needs, and work with all of our departments, and work with all of our boards and committees? So, that's what we're attempting to do tonight, just by giving you this opportunity to come in here, you know, and, and in some instances, express your displeasure, and that's what we, we signed up to do as elected officials, and so hopefully, you can at least feel, if nothing else, that you were given an environment to express your concerns. So, and we collectively can't make one decision on behalf of all parties. We have our school superintendent here who has a school committee, and other boards and committees that we have to cooperate with and follow those municipal town government rules. The other part that I mentioned to Michael as well, as part of your committee, is that he had mentioned he had had a conversation with Selectman Bendel, then he wanted to have a conversation with me. If I had a conversation with Selectman, Kyra, after that, we've constituted a public meeting just by three selectmen being involved in a conversation which violates the open meeting law. So that's the other reason why I invited you all to come in through Michael to have the conversation, because we did not want to be in violation of not having a transparent meeting, and that's the other reason for encouraging him to come in. So, so thank you for that, in, in doing so. So, I don't want to cut us short, I know the night is going long. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to rise and speak and ask a question regarding, or make a comment regarding the senior center or the Town Hall School Administration Building? Hearing none. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move on to communications.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So the first item under Communications is a memo from me with regard to the request for services on the owner's project manager for the Wildwood School. So, a- as you noted earlier, we are in the process of working with the MSBA, and the next major step in the process is the hiring of an owner's project manager. This individual serves as the town's advocate in dealing with the architects and designer, the contractors and subcontractors when it comes to building a school. So as part of that process, again, the MSBA is very much involved in all aspects of this process, and in this case, in terms of this procurement. There was a request for services document that was prepared and issued, they reviewed it, made some critiques and adjustments to it. And the document you have is the most current version. The document has been put out to bid, it's been advertised in the town prior, it's on the Central Register, which is a state procurement platform, and the bid deadline for the proposal deadline is the nineteenth of October at three P.M. Proponents will be asked to have their documents submitted us, to us at that point. We have a subcommittee of the Wildwood School Committee that will be meeting to review and, and score those proposals, and ultimately come up with a shortlist of proponents to interview, and then a recommendation will be made to me as to the firm best suited to serve as the OPM. I would then have the, the need to negotiate a fee, and ultimately, that all goes to the MSBA for final approval. And once the OPM is signed on, then we go to the next phase of beginning procurement for an architect to begin the feasibility study work that the town meeting approved back in March.
So Jeff, as a point of clarification, are these documents considered public, you know, or is this...
Yes, yes.
So is this attached on the website? Is this whole, so you'd be able to see these documents out there? Are you aware that they're posted on our page, so you could see them? Okay. So just as a point of reference, anytime our agendas are posted, we put all of the, the documents that we have here out there as well? These are quite large, so that, that's where they would be? Okay.
Next, um...
Just give just a clarification as well, is, on the subcommittee, i- is the subcommittee going to just narrow down the opponents, and then the entire committee is going to do the interview, or is the subcommittee selecting the OPM?
The subcommittee would then, once there's a shortlist of firms, would then interview that shortlist of firms and make a recommendation on, you know, the firms in terms of order. So firm number one, I would...
No, I, I, I get it.
Yeah.
So, I thought that the way it was worded is that the subcommittee would, you know, they get ten, ten companies, they narrow it down to three, or maybe four or five, whatever it could go to, three. Then those three would come before the, the entire board for the interview, and then it would be ranked. But that's not the way, you're having the, the smaller subcommittee do that interview?
Yes.
And do that selection, and not the entire committee?
Right, I believe that's consistent with when the high school project was done and the OPM was hired, there was a subcommittee of the high school building committee that met and, you know, went through a similar process.
I just, I read it one way, and I was...
The next memo to the board is with regard to the Wildwood School Building Project Update. This just references the presentation that took place a short time ago with our consultants, Doran Whittier, where they outlined eight options. Essentially, we started with sixteen, you'll recall, we, with the assistance of Doran Whittier, it was narrowed down to eight. One of those eight options included the prospect of using commercial space. I worked with our principal assessor to identify potential space, commercial space up on Ballard Vale and other locations. Ultimately, it was deemed not practical to pursue that kind of space, or a number of downsides, obviously, just lack of area for students to be outside, and, and even the prospect of whether some of these commercial entities would be receptive to this kind of use. So that one was taken off the table, so the remaining seven were costed out by the, by Doran Whittier, and the cost range is from five million, three seventy, seven twenty, for a limited renovation of the Wildwood School, up to seventeen, almost eighteen million dollars, seventeen point eight million for a grade reconfiguration, and then everything in between. So at this point in time, we're continuing to look at the options. Certainly, from a price standpoint, the five point three is, is the least expensive proposition, but I think it remains to be seen whether that option will be the one that will get recommended, or whether some other options are looked at. Clearly, that still at five point three is a significant amount of money to put into a school that may have a relatively short shelf life.
So to take it just one step further in looking at this, and just for people that are listening at home and, and those that are here, is that it indicates in the last paragraph that the Wildwood School Building Committee is expected to make a recommendation to the school committee. Not to spot you, Dr. Brand, but do you know when, is there a date certain that, that committee is gonna come before you? is going to come before you?
How many go to the left?
Sure, if you don't mind, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Good evening, Glenn Brand, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you.
So we have, we're in flux to adjust some dates right now in terms of what was originally set. We've just had a school committee meeting date changed, and they're no longer meeting on October twenty sixth, so we have to both call the next meeting of the Wildwood Building Committee.
Okay.
And I anticipate to be able to do that in the next couple of days to set a meeting date for that. So the school committee has two meetings in November, November the ninth, November ninth and November sixteenth. So I'm going to try and work into one of those dates to make that happen.
Okay, and then, if I can just leave you up there, if you may, if you don't mind, which will determine an option to recommend as a capital improvement project for the fiscal year twenty twenty four budget. I say this respectfully for anyone that's not familiar with how budgeting works and maybe has never gone to town meeting before, or doesn't understand how the operational budget for you works, how this will show up for them to actually have a voice and have a vote.
So the the most recent conversations with that my administration has had with Mr. Hall as town manager is that any fiscal requirement or expenses such with any option that might emerge from this process would be factored into or included into the school department's capital plan. And that capital plan is something that we, it is a component of our budget planning process as it is with the other town departments, and that usually that timeline is a little bit ahead of the actual full operating budget for fiscal year twenty four. So based upon the recent conversations, the recommendation at this point in time is that, again, any fiscal, any finances associated with any option that might emerge from this process would be included as part of the school department's capital submission to the town, and then it would move forward from there as part of the the budget process.
Part of the budget process. So if you were an interested party to provide feedback or comment regarding this particular area, what would you advise a person to do? Come to a school committee meeting and potentially speak under public comments at some point and/or attend other futuristic meetings?
Yes, there has, regardless of these adjustments and dates, there's been the intention of having, and the school committee, as as many know, does have a public forum just like this board here, for an opportunity of the community to come forward and share their concerns or thoughts or or what have you. There is full intention to do that as well, too, in advance of when the school committee's going to make a final decision on this.
Okay. Thank you very much.
For the chair, could I ask the superintendent? So is the policy of the public comments changing because here at a selectmen's meeting, we have public comments on the items right at the end of the meeting or as was done tonight during the meeting? Is it, it's my understanding that the school committee makes the public write letters, send emails, but they have to do it like a month, weeks in advance? They're not allowed to speak at the school committee meeting because they need to go through this whole process?
Actually, that's not, that's not accurate.
That's not, that's good to know.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question.
Yeah, that's good to know.
Written submission of comments is certainly something the school committee has opened up to, starting with the pandemic, and that continues. But no, the school committee approaches it, I would say, in a similar way as this board does, usually trying to constrain it to matters on the agenda for that evening.
Same.
But that that's open for anyone from the public to come and comment.
That's great. Yeah, same here. We we hold it to the agenda. So so just so I am to understand, if I show up to a school committee meeting, on the agenda, there's public comments, I am allowed to speak at that time? I didn't have to submit something weeks in advance that people have been telling me?
That's...
Jeez, Kevin, we can't even go to speak at a school committee meeting, we have to submit it weeks in advance in order to do that, and we don't have that opportunity. So that's incorrect.
Thank you for the question. That is, that is incorrect, if I may. May I just respond to that?
Yes, one hundred percent. Yeah, please do.
The the process that the school committee follows is that public comment is open, that the agendas are posted for the meeting on the, generally speaking, on the Friday preceding the Wednesday meeting. Public comment is open at that time, and if someone wishes to indicate that they're planning to come for public comment, then they can submit their name, and/or if they wish to submit a written comment, they may do so. Public comment usually closes on Monday, if I'm not mistaken, by the end of the day. That is not to say that someone from the public who shows up to the meeting would not be allowed to speak. That that the chair has been providing that latitude, if you will, for anyone to do so. So if you didn't register in advance, that's not a problem, you're still welcome to speak at the meeting.
Public comment is before the meeting or after?
Most recently, well, starting this school year, public comment has been shifted towards the end of the meeting now.
Okay, thank you. Those are important because I...
Thank you.
Sure.
I'd been hearing various pieces of information, too, so this has been extremely helpful. Thank you. So based on that, any other questions that you may have at this time? Because I know I, some people had gotten up to speak and I had asked you to to hold off. Do you feel that you're good at this time? Okay, thank you. All right, moving on.
Next is a memo from me with regard to the most recent Zoom session that the chair and I had with representative from the MBTA. This has been an ongoing dialogue that we've had with representatives from the MBTA about rail crossing safety issues. This most recent conversation, they highlighted that there were seven incidents at crossings that occurred from August through September. August was the last time we checked in with them. Five of those incidents took place in Au- in August and two in September. Three of the, three of the seven incidents actually involved vehicles striking the crossing arms as they were coming down. One incident involved a call that upon further inspection, there was no default that was identified. Another incident involved a crossing arm remaining in the horizontal position because there was a freight car that was idling on the tracks within that zone that activates the horizontal arms. And then there were two, the remaining two items were issued, issues that involved some minor repairs. And they provided the handout that the board has that identifies what appears to be the early stages of a potential trend going in the right direction in terms of the deficiencies that have existed at the crossings. As you recall, they added air conditioning units to some of these so-called bungalows that control, have the control panels in there for the activation of the arms. So it still remains early, obviously, but things perhaps may be on the on the right course. The chair did ask about the ability of the MBTA to release the report of the incident involving Ms. Sossville Divine. They have indicated that due to pending litigation, they are not able to release that report at this time. And then there was also discussion about notice that the MBTA will be sending out to each of their host communities concerning the use of deicing within the rail crossing zones. They recommend that deicing materials not be used, recognizing that ultimately it's up to the discretion and authority of the respective public works directors. This deicing material can interfere with the signal processing, of course, on the town side, depending upon the particular location and the scheme of the road as it hits the crossing. There's safety issues in not applying deicing material, but the directors will deal with that on a case-by-case basis. The next session, Zoom session, is slated for January.
Adam Chair?
Yes.
I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you and Tom Angiha for participating in these Zoom meetings time and time again.
Thank you.
I haven't missed one of them, I don't think, you know, you need to want to... I'm just curious, is our legislative delegation no longer an active part of these these meetings? I mean, they were at the beginning, they started off like gangbusters, but they petered off pretty quickly, and and it's important that we have, you know, our legislative delegation involved in these important talks with the MBTA. Do you, have have they been informed of these meetings?
They're invited to all of them.
They're invited to them. Okay.
Yes. So I appreciate the kind word. I will say to you that, you know, they have been, the MBTA has been exceptional to work with. They have put a full panel with us every single meeting. They are making real strategic investments, as you can, I mean, the MBTA is having issues overall. They've admitted that, from, you know, their federal reporting to, I mean, it is a difficult place right now. They are stressed in terms of staffing, in terms of funding, but they still are treating Wilmington absolutely as a major priority. We suggested, or I suggested, and I just kind of spotted Jeff with this, that it made sense for us to talk in January to kind of give a few more months of trends to see all of the enhancements, if the improvements are working. It's amazing how many instances that we have that we've had issues with the crossings where people are trying to jump the tracks. They're they're coming down and they're trying to beat beat the arms coming down. And if they knew that when those arms go down, there's less than thirty seconds before the train comes, and people, even with a fatality, not to take off of that, they're still trying to beat beat the gates. And and I don't, I don't know why people are doing that. Regarding the pending situation with the fatality, that is going to be a legal matter for a period of time. They are very clear that we're going to be relentless and persistent and consistent in knowing what happened and in getting more information on that. But they've been very cooperative with the town in really wanting to please the town with the work that they're doing to ensure continued safety and enhancements. Would you agree?
Yes, I I would.
So, but thank you for those questions.
Next is a communication from me with regard to communication that I received from Siret Technologies, a letter of intent to participate in a, in the Massachusetts Economic Development Program. You'll recall, a similar request was made by Analog Devices a few years ago. They're seeking a tax incentive financing program. They are a builder of three D printing machines. They state that to this point, they've had eighty million dollars in private investment. They're looking to increase their staff from eighty employees to a thousand or over a thousand, at least that's their goal. They're seeking a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of space, and they're looking for this tax incentive financing. It runs through the Economic Assistance Coordinating Council, they're the state agency that ultimately would have to sign off on something like this. There's also some limited state tax incentives that, again, this E A C C would have to approve. Information that was submitted was rather limited in terms of what they're specifically looking to invest, and certainly some of the things that that I think are important when we look at getting involved in something like this is not only the number of jobs they create, but also what is the economic impact that those employees may have in terms of shopping at our businesses and stores in town. There's a number of factors to consider. So at this point in time, looking to arrange a, probably be a Zoom session between the planning director and myself to have a conversation with the C Chief Financial Officer and find out more particularly what their plans are. Next, under communication is a memo from the town clerk, Beth Lawrenson, just noting that we had a vacancy or have a vacancy on the finance committee, Jonathan Dugas. He is, he is resigning effective December first. That seat is expires with the annual town meeting on April of twenty twenty-three, and then it would be up for reappointment for a new three-year term. So we are noting the vacancy and looking for those who may be interested in serving to, there's a form on the town's website that you can fill out if you're interested in serving or or else submit a letter just expressing your interest in any information people may feel would be appropriate. Submit that to myself or the chair of the Board of Selectmen. Once that information is received, then the appointing committee, which is made up of the chair of the select board, the chair of the finance committee, and the town moderator will meet with these individuals, if they're so inclined, and and make a decision.
Okay, moving on to board to consider.
First, under board to consider is the signing of the warrant for the special town As the board will note from your packet, there's kind of a menu of options here. By way of backstory, there was a prep meeting that was held about a month ago, as is always the case, in advance of town meetings, where the chair of the Board of Selectmen, the finance chair, town moderator, town council, some of the department heads, town clerk, myself and others, got together to review the agenda for the special town meeting and essentially look at the various scenarios there. Obviously, we have two projects on the docket, one being the financing of a senior center, the other being the financing of a town school admin building. There was some discussion that took place at that meeting about the providing of a report on these projects, given the nature of the projects. And so it was a suggestion at the time of the group that met that the board be at least presented with two options, one being to have three articles, the first article being a report on both projects, as similar to Article Two at the annual town meeting where committees and commissions can report on their activities. So in that instance, Article One would be a report on both projects. Article Two would be for the senior center or town school admin, and then Article Three would be the other project. In the alternative, the suggestion was that the reports be incorporated within the articles. So when the senior center article came up, there would be a report on the work to date on the senior center. When the town school admin project came up, there would be a separate and distinct report on that. So that, those initially started out as the two options. More recently, as we've progressed in terms of conversations about these projects, and more recently with a meeting before the finance committee, there was a suggestion by some members of the finance committee that the articles themselves, that the Board of Selectmen ultimately sign and issue to be publicized, that those articles contain the total sums to be raised and appropriated for each of these projects. As you know, the past practice has been, either at a special or an annual town meeting, that the article itself speaks to the general topic to raise and appropriate, transfer or borrow a sum of money for X, Y, Z, whatever that project is. And then the motion that is brought forward on the floor of town meeting actually identifies the amount to be appropriated. In this case, the finance committee was suggesting that to to get that information out there, that the articles make specific reference to the totals that were talked about earlier this evening for each of these respective projects. So to give you the option of potentially considering that scenario, either, again, using two articles or three articles, you've got a set of motions that propose that approach to actually specify in the article the total sums. Then there was further discussion about the prospect of how these projects are going to be financed, and as members of the board know, and it was presented during the finance committee, the finance director and myself have a recommending that with respect to the senior center, that of that seventeen million and change that's proposed for a senior center, that six million dollars be taken from our capital stabilization account and the balance be funded through borrowing. from our capital stabilization account and the balance be funded through borrowing. And then on the senior center, on the town school admin side, that twelve million dollars be transferred from available funds, free cash, and the balance of a little over twenty-six million dollars be borrowed. That is my recommendation, the Finance Director's recommendation. But again, the Finance Committee suggested the prospect of also detailing those sources of funding in the article itself as opposed to relying upon the motion. So, again, to give you those options, you have a set of articles in here, again, either two articles or three. But if you were to go in that route, then the board would want to, for the purposes of this meeting, identify the specific amounts that would be drawn from either free cash or the capital stabilization account and the amount to be borrowed. And those would be placed in the article as opposed to waiting for the motion.
Can I just, just for clarification, Tom Manager mentioned that it was twenty-six million, it's actually twenty-four million.
I'm sorry, twenty-four, yes, twenty-four and twelve, yep.
Thank you. So, I'd like to just jump to the front in the interest of time and just kind of throw something out there to try and simulate, and stimulate discussion, if I may. So, based on the feedback that I was hearing and also in having agenda prep meetings with Jeff and, and speaking to him with this at length, it's my understanding that it is the intent of the Finance Committee, or a majority of the Finance Committee, or forgive me if I'm not using the right words on that, but a, a large portion of the Finance Committee wants to see the numbers transparently listed on the articles and to disclose where the funding is coming from. I'm not opposed to doing that, so I would be in favor of taking the recommendations that are presented for the amounts that were just articulated, six million for the senior center, coming from capital stabilization, twelve million for the town hall school admin, and coming from cash reserves. I don't have any issues with stating them in the article. My opinion, I think that we should have a first article that hears both reports and hears them on the front end because that is going to be a set article that's going to be presented. And then the Articles Two and Three are going to be drawn at random. And so, I personally am uncomfortable with, say, whatever one comes first, I won't even name it because I don't want to be appearing that I'm favoring one over the other. But say it's one article and you hear just that report, and then you're being asked to take a vote on that specific subject matter without having the benefit of the other presentation known. I don't want someone in that room to say, well, if I had heard the presentation on the other project first, I may, maybe would have voted on that article differently. So, in my opinion, get the reports out there, get the facts and figures out there, get the deliverables out there, and then take the two warrant articles at random. And then everybody is duly informed for each voting process, what the merits of both projects are, and they can make an informed decision. So, if that's what I'm hearing, and, and correct me, Jeff, if I'm wrong, based on what I just articulated out, I would in essence be opting for Option F.
Yes, so that, that would be Option F, yes. And so, again, to, if, if the board were so inclined to take the recommendation that, my recommendation would be on, on the senior center, six million dollars transferred from stabilization and to borrow a sum of eleven million, two forty-six, five sixty-one. And then with respect to the town school admin, to transfer twelve million dollars from free cash and to borrow the sum of twenty-four million, eight eighty, seven sixty-six.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we select Option F. And as prescribed by the town manager, for the senior center, that six million come out of the stabilization fund and that, out of borrowing, eleven million, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-one dollars. And then for Article Three, as it's listed for the town hall school administration building, twelve million be taken from free cash, and the borrowing portion will be twenty-four million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Discussion?
Yes.
If, for the town manager, if one article failed, could we use that money that we're getting, taking from free cash for the second article?
If one article failed, certainly it's within, well, I, I ultimately would defer to the moderator because, as you know, the moderator is the one that has the final say in terms of actions. But I, I believe that it would be possible.
Oh, okay. I've just, you know, hypothetically, Article A fails, and you're sitting there with X amount of dollars for free cash. We can apply that over to the next one and just bring our debt down a little.
My comment would be that it would be the discretion of the moderator, as the town manager had stated. You don't know which article is going to be drawn first. There are always, there's always an opportunity for reconsideration, but you have to be, have voted on the prevailing side. Yeah. So, that's the distinction.
Thank you.
Yeah, may, maybe, and then again, maybe you know how to, we have to get that clarified. And I, and I wouldn't even take that approach to take, if that's the case and, and say that the senior center does fail, then I wouldn't suggest that, that six million go over to the town hall. Because, you know, we have other projects, as was mentioned, coming up, so why would we do that?
True.
Why, if, if town hall fails, why would I want to take twelve million and, and place it into the senior center? We have a system set up where we're going to take an appropriation and then we're going to borrow. So, let's go with that system because that's the right thing to do. You know, if something fails, you have that money in reserve to be used for other, other things coming down the road.
I will, I will say that, that.
But I hope they don't fail.
Sure. I would, I would just say that in the prep meeting, these discussions have happened, I will tell you that. And I know that you're not insinuating anything other than, but I will tell you that the town moderator is already well-poised and is looking at every different possible configuration scenario. He's drawn things out. He is very sharp and astute. He knows he has Mark Rich, who's going to be right there, as our town counsel. I'm sure that there will be people that may have a point of clarification or a point of order, and he's going to be prepared to take all of that up. So, I think we're going to be behind with his direction.
Very good.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous, and I just kindly ask that we sign this in the manager's office after so that we're not signing. No. What's, excuse me? Motion to adjourn for five minutes?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Yes, okay, thank you. So, I apologize, I did not realize that you were in the audience for that purpose, so. You can stand right there with the mic, it's fine. Thank you. So, Jeff, do you want to take us through this request?
This is a, a request to, well, I, I'll, I'll leave it to perhaps Ms. Rodriguez to describe it. It's really just an event to benefit the local kids.
Sure.
So, the Northside PAC supports the Woburn Street School and the North Indian Media, and we have different fundraisers throughout the year. One of the big ones has been the Fall Festival. That was kind of replaced last year with a trunk or treat, and it had, it was a big hit. We had over two hundred and fifty families last year. So, we anticipate being this, not as COVID-y as it was last year, getting more families. So, we would like to use the high school parking lot. I believe the high school facilities might be in use, but the student lot is more than enough space, and we wouldn't even use all of it. But it would allow the families to park there. We would segregate apart for the trunks. We also have support from the Wilmington Fire Department, so we expect a fire truck and hopefully a police car as well. We have some local businesses supporting us, including Code One Barbecue. So, there is like a number of local support.
Grant the request?
Motion's been made. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, back to item number eight.
Item number eight is.
Excuse me, seven. My apologies. Board to consider signing the warrant for the state election.
Yes, this is the warrant that contains the reference to the positions that are up for election or reelection, Governor, Lieutenant Governor, Attorney General, Secretary of State, Treasurer, Auditor, Representative in Congress, Counselor, Senator in the General Court, Representative in the General Court, District Attorney and Sheriff. And then there's four questions, ballot questions that are on the warrant.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to sign the warrant for the state election.
So moved.
Motion made. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
The next is a board to re, board to consider a request of the town clerk for an additional election worker, Pat McKinney.
Okay, would entertain a motion to grant the request to appoint an additional election worker. Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
The next is a board to consider the request of signing a purchase and sales agreement with Ryan Donnell and Carrie Malloy relative to the sale of town-owned land located on Pershing Street, map seventy-seven, lot twenty-six, pursuant to an affirmative vote on Article Fifty-four at the annual town meeting of April thirty, two thousand twenty-two. This is, property is four thousand seven hundred and ninety-one square feet. The, this went out to, to bid. There was only one bidder, which is the parties at hand, and their bid price was fifty-two thousand dollars. So, it's been reviewed by council, and it's my recommendation that the board authorize the P and S.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to grant this request for the purchase and sales agreement as conveyed by the manager?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Yes.
I just received a text from Robert Hayes that we're not online anymore.
WCTV, did you lose signal? Okay. Yeah, I think we're off.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. So, the next board to consider item, it's my understanding, it's a request from the manager to table this?
Yes, the, the next item is the signing of the deed relative to this same property. There were a couple of questions when it came in late on Friday, and so I'm asking that the board defer this until your meeting on the twenty-fourth.
To make a motion to defer this to the next meeting? So moved. Motion's been made. Do I have a second? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
The next is a board to consider a request of community to conduct events which require road closures, which require, you'll, you'll recall that this practice was adopted a few years ago so that we could provide the police and fire DPW with advance notice of potential events that would require road closures. There's three events that we've received requests on. The first being the Firecracker Five K Road Race in conjunction with the Fun of the Fourth. And this is slated to take place on Thursday, June twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. If you'd like, Madam Chair, I can just go through each of them for a group vote.
Sure. That'd be great.
The next is a similar request from the Soul Sisters Running Club for their sixth annual winter Soul Sisters Five K Run Walk. This will be taking place on December ninth of two thousand twenty-three, the same route as is typical for the Five Ks. And the third is a event requested, the Wilmington Little League Opening Day Parade, which would take place on Saturday, April twenty, two thousand twenty-four, at their normal route.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to grant these requests as identified by the manager. Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. The Little League, is it the twenty-fourth, uh, of the twenty-third, twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four? Is the other two of the twenty-three, the twenty-three, the twenty twenty-three?
I think so.
Oh, it's already from.
Oh, wow, okay. So, you're going in advance. I like it. Yeah. Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
All right. So, motion made, seconded, and discussion has been heard. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Next is board to requ, to consider request of Janine King Grace Chapel to place lawn signs on the Swain Green to publicize their Fall Festival to be held on Saturday, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. She notes that the request is for the signs to be placed on Middlesex Ave and towards, facing towards Middlesex Ave and School Street. Typically, we, the board has allowed signs to be placed on the Middlesex side of the common and on the Church Street side of the common, but it doesn't appear they're looking to, to be placed on the Church Street side, I guess.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion to grant the request? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, motion's been seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
The next one is a, so we look through thirteen, fourteen is a board to request Beth Rooney Wilmington High School Touchdown Club to use the municipal parking lot to conduct a fundraising car wash on Sunday, September seventeen, two thousand twenty-three, from nine AM to twelve noon, rain date, Sunday, September twenty-four, two thousand twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
The final board to consider is just your, your December schedule. As you know, the board typically meets once in December. It would be my recommendation with the board, consider the meeting as being on December twelfth.
Does anyone have any issues with that date? If, if not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept that as the meeting schedule for December?
Second. So moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second? Any discussion? Any conflicts, any issues? Does anyone need more time to look? Good. Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Public comments? I am seeing nobody in the audience. Announcements? Would anyone like to make an announcement?
Two quick ones, if I may. First of all, I want to, without divulging any personal details, I just want to compliment a lot of people who were at last Friday night's football game. Sounds like there was a resident in need, and a lot of people stepped up. I don't want to miss anybody, so I won't mention by any names, but it sounds like fans, staffs, residents, off-duty officers and firefighters and public safety personnel really stepped up, maybe saved somebody's life. So, kudos to the entire community there. And I also want to congratulate our town moderator and his lovely wife, Sarah, on the birth of their third child. Congratulations to the Eaton family.
Oh, wonderful. That's outstanding. Another girl?
Another girl.
Baby girl.
Very nice.
So, if he's a little tired at a town meeting, we'll give him a pass.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else for announcements? Any new business? Okay, hearing none. Important dates, please.
The first being October twelfth is a brush drop off Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. Again, on the fifteenth, brush drop off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. October fifteenth is a town-wide cleanup. October seventeenth is the Welcome to Wilmington reception, Memorial Library, six to eight PM. October eighteenth is a Finance Committee public hearing, Town Hall Auditorium, seven PM. October nineteenth, brush drop off Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. October twenty-first, Carter Lecture Fund, Middle School Auditorium, seven PM. October twenty-second, brush drop off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. October twenty-second, early voting, Town Hall Auditorium, nine AM to three PM. Again, October twenty-fourth through October twenty-eighth, early voting, Town Hall Auditorium, eight thirty AM to twelve thirty PM. October twenty-fourth through the twenty-eighth is the Curbside Collection of Yard Waste. October twenty-fourth is also a Board of Selectmen's meeting, Room Nine, seven PM. October twenty-sixth, another, another brush drop off Old Main Street, eight AM to two PM. Again, on the twenty-ninth, brush drop off Old Main Street, nine AM to four PM. Early voting on October twenty-ninth, Town Hall Auditor- p.m. Early voting on October 29th, Town Hall Auditorium, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. October 30th is the Horables Parade, Lowry Park, 4:30 p.m. October 31st through November 3rd, early voting, Town Hall Auditorium, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. October 31st to November 4th is a curbside collection of yard waste. October, November 2nd is a brush drop off Old Main Street, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Also, as noted earlier tonight, November 2nd, Town Hall School Administration and Senior Center Building Projects Public Forums, Town Hall, Room 9, 6:00 p.m. November 4th, early voting, Town Hall Auditorium, 8:30 a.m. to 5:30, 5 o'clock p.m. November 5th, brush drop off Old Main Street, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And November 8th is statewide, state elections. Polls open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m.
Thank you for that. So, we already did complete our salute to service. Once again, thank you to Stanley Souza for your service to our country. And at this time, prior to entertaining a motion to adjourn, I just kindly ask that members of the Board please remain in the Town Manager's office to sign a few things. So, at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion's been made. All those in favor? Thank you and good night.
Good night, everybody.